I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 15th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Malone. Soffa. Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Lohman.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Ferenbach.
Here.
Anderson. Vocal singer. That's 10 of 14.
We'll move on then to item two, which is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone. Make sure you can see the little green light if you come up. You can adjust the mic at the podium there. And then item three is approval of minutes from July, or I'm sorry, June 26, 2025 and July 7, 2025, special meeting. But do you have any corrections, anything? Motion approved. The minutes from those two dates. Second. Motion by Malley, second was Lancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then under item four, items we removed, added, or changed, we would like to move item 10 to 6A. Just a little bit of difference in the timeframe for tonight. All right, can I get a motion to accept that change?
No move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on to item five, which is matters from the public that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anybody has anything for something not on the agenda, please come up and just give us your name and...
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Justine Neese. I have been here before. It was right around, right a little bit after the first of the year I was here and I spoke to the group regarding the situation in my neighborhood. I live on the south end of Batavia Avenue and my neighbors and I have been very concerned for years about the speed limit in that area. I wanted to share with you recently, unfortunately, I was in an accident pulling out of my driveway. Luckily, I wasn't hurt. However, I wanted to share with you the circumstances surrounding the accident. The road diet combined with the road construction made pulling out of my driveway very hazardous. There were cones. Now, the day that this happened, it was a Sunday. There weren't any staff over there. I mean, there weren't any road construction crew in the area. The speed limit was not lowered. It was the same. It was 40 miles an hour, which it always has been. And what I shared with the group before is that people go faster than 40 miles an hour. You know, I mean, that's a well-known fact, so I know I see it every day. There were cones set up when I was pulling out of my driveway. There were cones on either side, so I had to pull out of my driveway going north, you know, turning left, going north. There was a very narrow passageway, so I'm going slow, trying to avoid the cones in the construction that was set up. A few minutes later, a car came up from the side, from my right side, and impacted the right side of my car. From the rear of my car all the way to the driver, the passenger's side door. A lot of damage was done to the car. I'm still waiting for the repairs. But anyway, what I wanted to mention was that I believe that the way the road construction was set up was hazardous for anyone pulling out of their driveway. You know, I was really sorry that I had turned left because, to be honest with you, with the speed limit the way it is, I don't think I'm ever going to turn left out of my driveway again. You know, I'm very, I'm shaken up by the accident and I don't believe it's safe. But to be honest with you, I believe that the, the, the speed limit is too high to begin with, coupled by the road diet. But with the road construction, it made the situation even more hazardous. So I wanted to share this with you and, you know, you know, I'll leave by saying that in construction areas, the speed limit is usually lower. And it wasn't lower this time, so I would like for you to be mindful of that in the future, that that really needs to be done. Does anyone have any questions about it?
I just wanted to comment that in the past, the city of Batavia has petitioned Illinois Department of Transportation, since that is an Illinois road and not a city of Batavia road, we don't have the authority to set the speed limit on that road. And we have in the past asked IDOT to lower the speed limit. That was before we put in the road diet. And they did a study and they came back and they said, they felt that the speed limits were appropriate, sorry, and that they would not change those. However, they also said that once we put the road diet in, that they would re-study that area. And I know that they have been doing that this summer and we don't yet have the results of that. So I'm hopeful that maybe they, now that we have the road diet, that they've come up with some different measures as well. At the federal level, they have implemented new guidelines on what should be considered and when you're setting the appropriate speed limits. And I'm also hopeful that taking the new criteria into consideration, that we might see a reduction of the speeds on that roadway. We would like to see reductions of the speed on that roadway as well, and I'm very sorry that the accident occurred.
Well, my neighbors and I are going to persist in this effort. We've gotten some emails from some of the aldermen, you know, stating that, you know, the situation is being studied and, you know, we're going to keep at it. So we're going to be persistent. That's all I can say. I will add also that, you know, these construction companies, I think that the city council really needs to keep an eye on them to make sure that they're doing things properly. Because in my experience, usually in these areas, the road construction sets a certain speed limit for that area, and that wasn't done this time. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Have you reached out to IDOT?
I'm sorry, what?
In your persistence, have you reached out to IDOT? Illinois Department of Transportation, that's...
The alderman who, you know, emailed us said that she was doing that.
Yes, we are for sure, absolutely. But the more the merrier is all I say. The more, more they get inundated with people, the better.
And also your state representative.
I guess I will. I haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything, matters for the public, not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. Lemon Beck?
Yes, the consent agenda reads as follows. Ordinance 2025-38, Extension of a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for the LI, Light Industrial, and GI, General Industrial Properties, in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District. Resolution 2025-94-R, authorize staff to proceed with firewall upgrade purchase. And resolution 2025-41-R, authorizing execution of the notice of award for the Year Three Lead and Galvanide Steel Water Service Replacement Project to Miller Pipeline. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Record reflect that Alderman Soffa centered. Right, then we'll move on to item 6A, which is ordinance 2025-40, variances for principal structure setbacks at 329 and 333 South Harrison Street.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight for the committee regarding three variance requests from table 2.203 for two principal structures located at 329 South Harrison and 333 South Harrison Street. The principal structure at 329 South Harrison Street was subject to residential fire in 2024, and we have been working with the applicant to go through the process and ultimately seek these variances. The applicant, Vince Giuliano, has provided staff with a submittal that ultimately is changing the bulk in a non-conforming setback for the existing residents and making several other improvements. That way, he can, you know, restore the fire damage helm rather than tearing it down because it is a non-conforming structure and setbacks. So he is seeking to get a variance at the north property line at its closest point of 5.3 feet. He's also looking to get a variance to allow his existing deck that is elevated above 36 inches, a variance of approximately four feet. And then we're also looking to provide a variance granting a setback of 7.77 feet for the existing footprint of the second structure on the property to avoid any other issues in the event that that gets damaged by a fire or a storm or whatnot. That is common practice, what we have done with other variances in recent practice, and we've added several conditions of approval consistent with other variances, such as adding a parkway tree. The applicant is here tonight. If there's any questions from the committee, otherwise I'm here for any other questions as well.
Anybody have any questions? I don't think that the variances change anything in the neighborhood. I mean, they're all different setbacks in, in that area anyway, so I don't think it'll be noticed at all. Okay. No comments, then I look for a motion to recommend to council ordinance 2025-40, variances for principal structure setbacks at 329 and 333 South Harrison. No move. Malley, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Move on to item seven, which is resolution 2025-082R, authorizing execution of an MSA with Batavia DC Corp. More?
Yes, so beginning last fall, we entered into discussions with a developer who was interested in bringing a data center to the city of Batavia at a property located at 1780 Hubbard Drive, which is in our northeast industrial park, really closely located near one of our substations there. Their expected initial electricity demand would be about 20 megawatts, and they have expressed an intent to grow up to 50 megawatts at this location. Due to that large size load, they are eligible for, under our rates in our code, for market-based rate. And the rate would include the PJM Batavia Hub energy price and energy cost adjustment, a .005 kilowatt per kilowatt hour, all PJM charges and credits applicable to the data center, a distribution charge, an administration fee, and then all other tax fees and levies. And the following revenues are expected to be generated by the project, assuming, beginning at that 20 megawatt level. Initially, the electric utility would receive $875,000 per year in the energy cost adjustment as well as $1.4 million annually in distribution charges. In addition to that, the general fund could expect $375,000 in electric franchise fees. The data center will be responsible for constructing all of the onsite electrical improvements at their location. The city of Batavia will be responsible for constructing all of the off-site improvements that would be necessary. However, the data center is willing to pay for those improvements upfront, which are estimated to cost about $18 million. And according to the terms of the MSA, over the course of a seven-year period, following the year after which they achieve a 20-megawatt load, they would begin to receive reimbursement amounts over seven years. The first three would be at 20% of the off-site improvement costs, and the next four would be at 10% of the off-site improvement costs. Electric is one of the primary considerations in terms of whether the data center will choose to locate here in Batavia, so we felt it made sense to come to terms with regard to providing electric. I know you'll have questions about water as well, and the developers are here tonight and able to answer any questions about this project that you may have. With regard to the facility that they're intending on building, it would be about a 120,000 square foot facility. They have not yet applied for secured a building permit, but should this master service agreements be approved and that they secure the property, that would be the next steps in the process. Construction is expected to be completed and the data center operational somewhere toward the end of 2026 or beginning of 2027. So one thing to keep in mind is they would be taking their electric from the Batavia hub that is located at Fermilab, which is owned by Commonwealth Edison, and the city is able to take a maximum of 150 megawatts off of that node. The city's energy that they ordinarily draw off there is 55 megawatts, but at its peak, it is 85. So should the data center grow to be using 50 megawatts of power in addition to 85 that we would need at peak capacity, that would be 135 megawatts of the total 150. And that would be a point at which we, we are only obligated under the master services agreement to provide the data center with 50 megawatts. But that would be a point at which, and as we approach that point, that we would need to discuss, you know, what comes next for us in terms of what we see as the city of Batavia's future energy needs. And also, is there an opportunity to work with the data center and collaborate together on mutually agreeable terms that allow us to grow the energy that would be available from ComEd at that point? But that's, you know, down the road, but I just wanted to make sure that that was part of your understanding of the agreement that we're looking at.
Questions?
Questioned, you know, I realize that the 55 megawatts that we get from Prairie State, we're not current, don't necessarily use all of that.
That's correct.
So that amount that we don't, I realize it's not enough to provide for the whole data center, but would this eliminate the, the need to be reselling back at wholesale?
At this point, us selling back at wholesale is an advantage. The, the energy cost that we are getting from Prairie State is actually less than what we're selling it back to the market at these days.
Yes.
I want to say these days.
Yes.
So it's, right now, it is not an advantage for us to do that. Perhaps in the future, that may be the situation.
Chris?
My concern is the $18 million. So basically, we have to repay the, I mean, we're going to pay $18 million for this to be built and located in our town.
Out of the revenue that is generated from the project. So they do not, they are not eligible for reimbursement unless they have met that 20-megawatt load in the previous year. So if they never reach 20 megawatts, they're never eligible for reimbursement. And so, but if they do reach 20 megawatts, then we are realizing all of these revenues mentioned that can be used to then reimburse.
Revenues are going to total 875 plus 375 plus 1.4?
The 375 is to the general fund, so the 875 and the 1.4 are the initial at 20 megawatts, what the revenue is projected to be.
So at, but 2.3 million?
2.3 million, and in all likelihood, they, there will be a ramp up. So what we're expecting is maybe them to be at 50% in the first year, 75% in the second year. If the third year they achieve that, we still have all of those partial year revenues stacked up. And we've done the, the projections of revenues at the, those levels and determined that we don't go into a negative cash flow.
Ever?
Not ever, under that scenario with an $18 million cost or a $20 million cost. So...
The profits would be realized potentially when for the city then? Like after five years? If they, if they ramp up and they...
So the cost projections always being positive, anything that is positive is something that we can put toward the reserve account in the electric utility. And that would be to, for any, you know, maintenance costs through, throughout our system to help in the event that we needed a rate increase to help soften the rate, rate increases. Those are the types of things that we could use the revenue for because our electric utility, unlike an investor-owned utility, is a not-for-profit. So anything that is revenue that is earned above cost is reinvested into the utility.
Laura?
Yes.
They have a presentation as well as some handouts. I don't know if you would want to do that now or have questions go around?
I think we'll finish up on the first round of questions here and then we'll have them do the presentation. Dustin?
I was going to say, this definitely seems like a pretty strong opportunity for the city. It's been negotiated very well to reduce as much risk on our side as possible. And I do, but I do have a few points of caution at the very least to look at going forward. The first bit is while this will come in under our current 150-megawatt capacity, it will eat into a bit of our sort of resiliency of our system. I've been talking to Steve Allen over the weekend about understanding our transmission system a little bit better. Right now, we get our power from the ComEd transmission lines, and there are three transformers there that would draw power from. Right now, we could get away with only two of those operating, with the third only being there to reduce the load on the other two. If there is a transmission, if there is a transformer failure, which has been known to happen, there was one at Fermilab just last year, which we still haven't recovered from, the other two can carry that slack, which is pretty good. However, as we ramp up this facility, we'll be eating into that margin such that the current three transformers no longer have that backup option available, which is one thing we're going to be wanting to definitely look forward to, to ensure energy stability in a worst-case scenario. So we could operate in that time period safely and finely, but if something does go wrong, it could put us in a really difficult situation. So there's been talk of wanting to get a second, a fourth transformer in there as sort of a regular backup. That is going to be fairly costly. It could be several million dollars, so, including a very long timeline. So we want to be thinking about that now and also factor that into the overall risks on the city's side because that is more than likely going to be on our side. It sounded like you might be negotiating a few things on that behalf, so just another area to look at. The second side in terms of concern is simply that, it's one of those concerns that's also like very exciting, but also just, you know, operationally interesting. This is going to be a very large revenue jump for the city, like up to 5% in some projections, which is great, but it also means that it, when we're getting that from a single entity, that is also a form of risk for the city. Just because you don't know, you know, none of us know the future. This is very cutting-edge technology in a lot of ways. It's hard to say how these, this industry will develop. You know, there's, there's naturally some risk there. That's why it's such a profitable industry in some ways. But in terms of long-term functionality for the city, although, again, we've negotiated well to not end up in a hole at any point, the other side of it is we need to be very careful with what we do with the proceeds from this. Because if we let it become part of our regular just operations budget, if we let it become expected and something massively changes in the industry such that we no longer are getting that revenue, it could put us in a very dire situation. To me, I think we need to treat this less like a regular source of income and more like a windfall, to the point of, we should probably put this money away in some way, in some fund or other investment strategy such that we can kind of live off the interest more than treat it as regular operating inflow, almost sort of like what Norway does with their oil revenues. It's like they put it towards a long-term fund that they can live off of even after the oil industry either goes away there due to extracting all the oil or whatever else happens in the future, in order to provide long-term stability such that depending on whatever the future of this facility is, and again, nobody can say for sure because it's an exciting time for all of us, we will be set up for stability in the long term. So that's my take on it.
The money that goes into the general fund, that's what we get to decide what that gets spent on. So you're absolutely right, we can have that discussion and decide what we want to do with that money. So I think that's something that we have to decide.
Yeah.
Jim?
So, so a couple of things. So, you know, this is part, part of my business, and quite frankly, data centers, that's where the industry is going. This will not be our first data center. We'll have many of these, right? And they'll either be repurposed for some of these big box stores or whatever, or they'll, or they'll be net new like this one, right? So this is going to be a coming thing. In Illinois, this is where the jobs are growing. This is where the investment's growing is around information services. So there's not a reason in the world not to do it from a future state perspective because it, because this is where, is where everything's headed, right? More importantly, I wouldn't view this as a temporary thing, simply because what's happening is that, and we look at the workloads that HUD 8 actually runs, and I understand you guys, we're going to hopefully present first, we're doing this after the fact, yeah. You know, it's AI workloads, it's, it's crypto mining workloads, it's general purpose computing workloads, it's GPU workloads, and all those things are being embedded within our lives across the board, right? So although we may view this from a infrastructure perspective, as I have a building here and it's going to host some servers, the fact is, you're going to be using those servers every day, and you're using those servers every day as part of your everyday life, you just don't realize it, right? Because you're exposed to it through your smartphone, through your digital assistants, through your, you know, Amazon Echos or whatever you're using, right? That's, that's what this, this infrastructure like this is actually serving, right? So think of it as like you're paying the, you're paying the fee for all the convenience that these AI materials are giving you, right? So a couple of logistics stuffs. Number one, it's out of the way. It's, it's east of Kirk Road, so, so it's just south of Aldi, so no one's even going to see this thing, I'm going to get down to it. I've lived here for 20 years, I've never driven down that street, so, so it's going, going to be out of the way. And then with the server business, you continually work to reduce your power costs, right? Because it's your biggest expense, right? So they're always trying to get that power cost down, right? So what that means is that it's inherently more efficient. As somebody who works for one of the major hyperscalers, I'm going to tell you, I have two big rivals, and, and all we do all day is beat on each other for, on two things, the cost of compute and the cost of storage. And a key component of both those costs is the cost of power, right? And the cost of HVAC, right? So, so this organization will be working to reduce their power consumption per whatever measure they have on a monthly basis for as long as that facility is there. So it's, it's inherently a increasingly efficient industry because, because that's how you become more profitable. Okay? That's my take.
Yeah. Much like Jim, it's some, part, part of my business as well in my day-to-day life, and first of all, very exciting. I think it was maybe day one with the mayor that I said I want a data center here. I think it might have been day one, day two. I think I told Laura, I think I told everybody I saw, but so this is very exciting. I, Jim, thank you for doing some of the research. I haven't, and I'm excited to hear HUD 8's presentation, but you know, my, my excitement level actually turns to the future. You know, to Jim's point, I don't think this will be our last data center. I sure as heck hope it's not. And what becomes more exciting in the future is when you have co-location data centers that can land here. Because it's not just that company, it's that associates with your town, right? So, you know, there's a number of them out there names-wise, but then all the companies that co-locate in there now have... I sure as heck hope it's not. And what becomes more exciting in the future is when you have co-location data centers that can land here because it's not just that company, it's that associates with your town, right? So, you know, there's a number of them out there names wise, but then all the companies that co-locate in there now have property in Batavia as well. So it's a it's just something really to get that Batavia name out. The the brand equity of Batavia will grow tremendously with that because these are major corporations, you know, taking smaller space in these larger data centers for those that don't know what a co-location is. But so, yeah, I'm excited for the future. I think, you know, the power Dustin makes some great points. I mean, all of this needs to be looked at when we start talking about these insane power needs that are coming down the line and, you know, who knows what the future of co-locations look like too. They could become more GPU focused and, you know, that could be the whole wave of the future. We don't know. But so very exciting and excited to hear the presentation.
I will say, I think it's probably been about a decade we've been talking about data centers, you know, and how we could locate one here. We've always looked at, you know, the resiliency that we have in the electric grid that we have set up. We had one giant user that was located to the northeast. When they left, we also have ringed power in different places so that way we can always make sure we can feed businesses like this. So I think this one, especially being as close as it is to the, you know, the rest of the infrastructure over there, I think it is definitely the time we need to look at and see, do we need to add the fourth transformer to make sure that we don't have any problems and no interruptions? I think that's important that we try to stay as far ahead on, you know, the resiliency side as we can. I think our prices are going to be comparable or better than what ComEd is going to offer. So without any state help or anything else, I think we stand a good chance, just like every time McDonald's locates somewhere, there's a Burger King in sight, you know, and there's a Chipotle and whatever else, you know, feeds off of those. That's really the way I see this.
Well, they follow.
And then they just expand, you know?
They're all chasing the infrastructure.
And if they see, wow, they have a good deal, they're happy with Batavia, we'll locate more of them.
And cool part about it, they're incestuous as far as help goes. People like migrate from data center to data center from a job perspective, right? And they'll stay local too. So it's a it's a great industry to get into. It really is.
And it's something that's just only going to grow.
Right.
That's the way I look at it. Okay, HUD 8 would like to come up and give you a presentation? We can do that now.
We can hand them down. Yeah, all good. Yep, thank you, sir.
If we can just get your names for the record.
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks, everyone. My name is Chris Fickery. I'm a vice president at HUD 8.
Hi, everyone. My name is Riley Tredell. I'm the SVP of Data Center Development at HUD 8.
Yeah. On the first side, both of us are actually Chicago guys, both U of C grads. It's super exciting to work on a kind of a project back home, which is great. So on a personal note, before I get into the slides, I thought it might be worth just touching on the conversation that was going on at the beginning regarding the offsite infrastructure costs and then what the revenues could look like coming into the city. And I think one maybe important thing to point out is the way that we structured the deal from kind of a risk management standpoint for the city is all of the cost of the electricity, the PJM charges, all of that stuff flows completely through to us. The city holds no risk on the floating nature of those prices. If they go up or down, we hold 100% of that risk. The city holds none. And the the distribution charge, kind of the dollar per kilowatt month charge that we pay in to help pay for the city's infrastructure and the O and M on that infrastructure, that is there regardless. So then you're talking about the energy cost adjustment piece, the franchise taxes, the administrative fees, all of that purely goes to the city. And the only way we become eligible to get any money back for the offsite infrastructure improvements is if we are here consuming a lot and paying all that money in. And the only way we can, and if all that is true and we are eligible to get reimbursed, it doesn't come in the form of cash. It only comes in the form of bill credits, right? So there's never a cash outlay that would we'd ever ask for from the city to come back to the facility. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I just wanted to to point that out on the front end. And the idea of this thing being a 20 megawatt at the start facility, it's really kind of a generalized comment, right? Only to represent the fact that as you're building this thing, you don't just build it in one day at zero and the next day it's 50, right? There is some ramp, just a general construction process as you bring tenants in, as you bring servers in, right? It takes you a second to get up to 50. But the end of the day, this is a 50 megawatt facility and the energy cost adjustment alone is $2.2 million a year to the city at that level. And that is that is the build level for the facility in the in the status quo long term environment. All right, so anyways, to get into the slides. So who HUD 8 is, right? I mean, it sounds like there's been some research done here. Some folks have an idea, but we are an energy infrastructure platform that integrates power digital infrastructure and compute. And so like was mentioned before, you know, we do, we have data centers that we build that do all kinds of compute workloads that vary and they vary depending on the characteristics of the site that we have, right? And so some of those are high performance compute, GPU data, data loads, some are AI, some are crypto. I will say for the sake of everyone here, this site is not particularly conducive to crypto compute loads. It's not the intent of this site at all to have that. And it purely comes down to cost of power. Crypto workloads require very, 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 very cheap power. Illinois as a state in general doesn't kind of fall into that category, into that bucket. So I'm going to go to the next slide. So this is a list of kind of a select list of our assets, right? And so the point here is that it's not our first rodeo, right? We have, you know, over 1,000 megawatts of facilities that span data centers from, you know, smallish, you know, sub five megawatts up to multi hundred megawatt, right? We are bringing a 205 megawatt data center online right now, like real time this month in Texas. And we also operate four power plants in Ontario. So our footprint spans, you know, across North America, multiple provinces in Canada, multiple states in the US. This would be our first facility in Illinois. Like I said, pretty excited about that, particularly for guys like Riley and myself who have called this place home before. Next slide. We don't need to go through this in general, but the point here is that HUD 8 brings a bunch of expertise in from a bunch of places in both the energy industry and the data center industry. And that you guys, you know, you can see the the symbols there on the top of, you know, the types of places that that we represent as an organization. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Riley. Like I said, he runs the data center development team, which is the team that does the actual, you know, real design work of these facilities. Let him talk about the actual site we're looking to build.
Thanks, Chris. Max, I think it'd be good to actually go to the next slide. There's a rendering that's a little bit prettier to look at than that black and white thing. But this is what the facility on Hubbard Avenue will look like in 99 out of 100 cases. So this would be standing on the top, on the rooftop of the the building kitty corner. If you go to the next slide, Max, you can kind of see what it would look like from ground level. So as you're driving by, it would look something like this. The logo is actually going to change. We did get a new logo today, which we're all very proud about. So folks on our team have been working very hard on that, so we did rebrand. So if you see a website with a different logo, don't get confused about that, but that just happened. And we probably wouldn't have that sign, but generally the facility is going to look like this from the ground level. There's going to be a glass facade on the front. The building will be a steel frame concrete structure, so it's going to have concrete panels on the outside. Those will be painted white and a light gray most likely. But again, there will be a glass facade on the office and on the front. In terms of landscaping and in terms of the overall site plan, there's not a ton of land to work with here to pack in this much power. However, data centers generally are getting higher density. The computers are starting to consume more power on an individual basis. And so in today's day and age, you can put 50 megawatts in a building this small. 10 years ago, 50 megawatts would take 10 times more land. So we're we're lucky to benefit from Moore's Law on that one. But the facility will, you know, be kind of nondescript from the outside. Every piece of dirt that is not used for either the facility itself or for parking for our employees or for fire lanes for the fire department to access the building per code is going to be beautified and landscaped as much as possible. So we'd be looking to install mature trees along the property line to kind of block sightlines, flower beds, mulch bushes up front and some like well manicured sod grass in as many places as we can so that it can fit into the neighborhood and isn't an eyesore. And generally on the facility itself, for for everyone here at the meeting, the facility is 50 megawatts. What that means is that there's about 36 megawatts of power dedicated to computing and 14 megawatts of power dedicated to cooling the computers. So you get so many computers in a building, they create a lot of heat, 36 megawatts to be exact. We got to spend 14 megawatts to get that heat out of the building. That will just be exhausted into the air and it won't have any visible exhaust or anything like that. That'll just be air at about, call it 80 degrees Celsius or a little bit, you know, below or a little bit above 170 degrees Fahrenheit going up into the air. And the facility will be very quiet. So the equipment that is going to be deployed here is going to be for sensitive mission critical workloads. This probably actually isn't a location where AI, even though it's getting all the hype right now, this again, this isn't a location where AI is probably going to be the use case. This is more of a traditional CPU based or cloud computing application. So it's not going to be chat GPT or anything fancy like that. It'll be credit card processing or additional capacity for cloud computing resources that are running this Zoom meeting right now or things that you may use at work, things that kind of stay in the background on our society. We'll have clients or tenants that come in and use the space to run those servers because they need to tuck more of that computing power into Chicago, the broader Chicagoland area itself. So they may be here, they may have a lot of demand here and they're short, and so they want to be able to provide that service to their customers locally at as little latency as possible. So they want to put the servers that are serving people who live here actually here to make a better user experience. So the facility will be a total investment of about $500 million by HUD 8 as the owner of the building and the infrastructure for powering and cooling computers. And then it will be about $1 billion of investment for our tenants who bring the servers and the IT equipment themselves. The facility for HUD 8 to run all of the infrastructure will be about 30 to 40 full time employees. And then our tenant, depending on what application they deploy, depending on what type of servers, will also have their own employees that that work at the facility. These are good jobs, folks who work in everything from, you know, skilled electricians to welders, pipe fitters, mechanical contractors, all the way up to IT technicians, people that are fixing servers, doing networking, you know, troubleshooting and actually moving servers in and out. So all in all, the facility should hopefully tuck in, be quiet and be a additive member of the community. And we're happy to be here to like field any questions, talk about data centers, potential misconceptions or just generally go through, you know, how the business works and kind of what we plan for this property and also the construction phase as well. So appreciate your time and listening to that long rant, but there's some more slides, Max, but they're probably not as important. This is just an overhead. It shows what the property is. So again, this is on Hubbard Avenue, just right north of the Department of Energy property on the Fermilab, right next to one of the beautiful substations that you all have. And then the next slide shows our potential access points. So we have access to the east and to the west from Hubbard Avenue. And then there's also the Union Pacific Railroad. We're probably not going to have a railroad interconnect, so don't worry about increased rail traffic. There's nothing heavy coming in and out. And then the last slide here is the the current zoning. So right now, we're we're general industrial and the building will be built to state code, to local code, to national electric code, as well as IEEE specifications on the electrical side. So again, happy to answer any questions. This is more super detailed stuff that my team and I were working on with Steve, so he could probably nerd out on this stuff. But if anyone wants to know how the medium voltage electrical works, you know, pull us aside at the end, we can tell you about it. So thank you.
Anybody on council have questions? Dustin?
Definitely puts me at ease knowing that it's more, you know, backbone, just regular data center, cloud storage, you know, computing work. So definitely glad to hear that. I think that it definitely gives me more confidence in the future. Sorry. Not that I thought it was too bad, but yeah, I think hearing that definitely is good to hear. Looking at your, I was looking at your website over the weekend, you do brag a bit about having a lot of green energy on as a part of your like portfolio, trying to draw from those sources since you'll be buying, since we'll be doing new contracts to beyond just our current very state contracts. Would that be a priority for you all to go towards those energy sources in the area or?
You mean, you said you'll be doing new contracts for this? Is that what you?
Well, yeah, that depends. We talked about a bit looking at the.
Since they're going directly to PJM.
Yeah.
What they're taking in is the mix of everything that that is PJM as opposed to them making a contract with one source of generation, they're basically getting the mix that's coming off of the RTO.
Okay. Yeah, I can give a little more color on it. So that is functionally correct, right? Because of the way we structured this, being that we are, you know, we're taking, we're taking the price that PJM generates at Batavia Hub, right? So that being said, right, there's, there's a couple of things. One, if, you know, if the city becomes subject to a renewable portfolio standard requirement, the contract has a mechanism in there for renewable energy credits to be purchased on behalf of the facility or for us to purchase those or suggest where to purchase those and the city purchases them on our behalf, that's in there. And then totally separately from the power supply agreements with the city that we have, we certainly have, you know, all of the opportunities that would exist to any real market participant to contract for renewable energy from either hedge against movements in power prices or just to have that access, that access to that power entirely separately from our agreement with the city. So there's all, without going into too much detail on this, there are all kinds of virtual and financial transactions that can be done directly with renewable facilities that kind of allow those facilities to be built or to stay online, provide them kind of revenue certainty. And then we on the other, on the flip side of that, get get their power and their renewable attributes. So those are, those are things that we'll evaluate in real time as we continue to develop the facility. But from a true mechanic standpoint between the city and the data center, what Laura said is exactly right.
I had a question. Well, number one for the city, I, so we have an incentive to 20 megawatt, right? Is there an incentive to 50 megawatt? And and you don't have to answer that right now, but maybe we should think about that because here, you know, the way that I see it is, you know, given that it's a co-location facility and you guys might already have clientele lined up for this facility, you know, looking to for space in Chicago might be why you're building it. I'm not sure. So that's my question to you guys. Do you anticipate? I mean, obviously it's a, it's a booming business, you know, but do you anticipate filling that space fairly quickly? How have you guys, you know, performed in other markets like this one, not necessarily, you know, a bigger, well, we're on the outskirts, right? Of of the big market being Elkhart Village or downtown or, you know, three, you know, CB building or whatever, SixTerra, whatever you want to call it. Or Cyrus one, I'm sorry. So, yeah, that would be my question.
Yeah, I mean, I'll touch on it first. I'll let you talk about tenants if you want, but I mean, the kind of the order of operations here, right, is the the best way to convince tenants to show up is to prove you have power. This right here is the moment that takes the conversations with the tenants from theoretical to real, right?
For sure.
And so that is, that's the real, that's the real driver of the need to have the power locked up here. In terms of the the motivation, like the incentive, I mean, that we are incented to get to 50 megawatts regardless, right? I mean, like the the more we can put in these facilities, the better off they are, right? The the point of putting in that 20 megawatt minimum was to make sure the city was never in trouble, right? The city never went out over their skis to get us in the door and we didn't show up in a way that puts you guys behind the eight ball on that money.
Right. Right.
So I mean, our business motivates us to get to 50. We just wanted you guys, truly, I mean, the point was to make sure the city was never in a bad spot.
True. And I think your, your name is Tim, correct? Yeah. So a little bit about how, I mean, you know, you seem to know quite a bit about data centers. So just for everyone else, the data center industry has evolved extremely rapidly in the last five years and even more so in the last five months, it seems. You know, 10 years ago, it was a three point, it was a 5.0 megawatt facility was gigantic. And a 1,000 kilowatt or a 900 kilowatt customer was a huge customer. And so you might actually have to go sell 100 kilowatt suites and go do 50 of those to fill out your facility.
Forty kilowatt cabinets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now we're doing, yeah, 40 kilowatts in a single thing that would fit right here at this podium. So it's gotten quite a bit denser. I mean, even up to 120, even 200 is what we're building and is what we just synergize in Texas. So it's getting quite a bit denser. So what we're looking at right here is. There are people that could actually take the whole facility, one single client. And it's funny, the facility is almost not quite big enough for them. People want 200, 500, 1,000 megawatts to take down all in one, in one bite. And so the people that used to be the 100 to 500 kilowatt suites, those people are 10 megawatts. And so you could bring three to four of those folks in and fill out a facility. And the people that used to be the five to 10 megawatts now want 1,000. And so you can potentially get one person to take it all down or split it up into a couple of little chunks. But the idea that there would be vacancy in Chicago is, is. Like in today's day and age is just a little bit more fleeting and we want to develop here because there's demand for more capacity.
Right. Well, you, you hit the nail on the head and it's why I asked the question because it's a small site, right? So, I mean, you know, and we, you got some competition popping up right over across the street. And there's, you know, other folks that that I'm well aware of. So. Then we got the lovely hyperscalers. But yeah, so no, I just wanted to, I just wanted to touch on that and see where you guys were at with it. But I totally understand tonight's the kind of linchpin and then, you know, it's game time from a sales perspective. So no, I, it's fantastic and can't wait for you guys to get started.
And look, in the future, we'd love, we'd love to expand, right? I mean, the, the city is not obligated to serve anything above 50 megawatts in this agreement on purpose. Because we recognize exactly the position you guys are in with ComEd and where you're, you know, where your interconnection lies. But that being said, right, you know, if this goes well and you guys want to talk about expansion, we'd like to be a part of that. You know, find additional land and go bigger in the community, right? But that's, it's a, it's a discussion for another day, you know, walk before you run.
Try before you buy.
Yeah.
You know, just one final comment. So first off, thanks for this. This is great. I think we're all delighted, at least I was when I saw this pop up in my email.
Great.
All the time. Anyways, you know, it's a very, for those who are not familiar with this industry, like, you know, like we are. This is a highly innovative field. He just spoke to it about the physical like space that used to be required for this stuff. I mean, it is getting super innovative, right? And when you get that innovative, other technologies come into play, other expertise comes into play, different people show up, right? And so what that leads to is just, it's almost like a halo effect, like other people get to get familiar with the area, you know? Then they want to come here and they want to start business here and all that good stuff. So this really is a halo opportunity. I hope we don't treat it like just a regular, you know, run of the mill business walking in. We'll always get another warehouse, right? We'll always get another, another drugstore pop up, right? This is the first we're getting like this. And I, and I, like I said, when this conversation started, I really doubt this would be the only one as long as they're successful. So.
Four questions, so bear with me while I get through these. Laura had sent an email after I asked a question about water usage, that it could be anywhere from 1,000 gallons a day to. 150 gallons per day, depending on which system you go with. What is the, what is the plan for your water cooling systems?
Yeah, absolutely. So the water usage for the potable system, the domestic supply for the human facilities, the folks that work at the site. Is a very light demand. It's a peak demand of 42 GPM. If everyone happens to flush the toilet and turn on all the faucets at the same time, we don't want to lose pressure. So we have that. But the water usage for the employees is about 116 gallons per day, so not a ton. The building, given the amount of electrical equipment in there, this is an industrial building at the end of the day. It has fire protection system requirements that are mandated by the state fire marshal. That require that there's a high pressure dry pipe sprinkler system in the facility that can supply a lot of water. So the, the water main for the fire suppression system will be able to peak up to 1250. But that will never be used unless in the event that it's triggered by a fire. And then for the data center industrial water supply needs itself. It is again, like as, as Jim mentioned, it's a highly variable industry where people are using a lot of different technologies. And some folks are particularly keen on using evaporative cooling water to cool down. The water that circulates inside the facility to cool the chips. Now, before I touch on that, the facility itself is water cooled through a closed loop. So basically we fill it one time. It's 450,000 gallons or about 68% of an Olympic swimming pool. So that gets filled once, set it and forget it. We maybe recycle it every couple of years or so. But that water just goes around and around going hot, cold, hot, cold. High UAC and it goes into the servers and then it'll come back out or maybe into a big air to liquid heat exchanger and pull hot air out of the building. But that water then gets hot from the servers and then you have a choice of how to cool that loop back down. You can either use air cooled chillers, which are basically just like a big AC unit that plug right onto that loop. And that chill the water down. And those use electricity to do that, just like your AC in your house. Another design that some people are particularly keen on is using water for evaporative or ADBatic assist. Or for evaporative cooling towers. So essentially the water is, for lack of a better term, misted. And the evaporation of the water is able to pull a lot more heat out of the loop for, for less energy consumption. So the chiller option uses more electricity, whereas the water option uses water but less electricity. So the, the folks that that would be tenants in this facility are very large companies, multinational companies. If anything, they're completely global companies that have computing all over the place. And the different counterparties have their, their own ideas of water versus energy consumption. Some companies believe that they should consume water, some believe that they should use chillers. Now, the truth is that more electricity use means that power plants have to generate more electricity. And because of thermodynamics and chemistry, a power plant generating energy uses a lot more water. Than it takes to actually pull that energy out of a computer. So without going, giving you too many numbers, one megawatt hour of electricity generated at a power plant. On average in the US uses about 10,000 gallons of water or evaporates about 10,000 gallons of water. And cooling one megawatt hour burned in a computer with evaporative cooling. Uses about 2,000 gallons of water. So it's 20% of the usage. So some companies who are global, they decide that generally we want to use water because at the end of the day. Using water at the data center means that less water overall is going to be used. Whereas some folks say, we don't want to use water because we want to consume more electricity. And the electricity may be produced at a plant that doesn't use steam cooling. Maybe it's not a nuclear plant or gas plant or coal plant. Maybe it's a wind farm or a solar farm and a battery. But generally there's a lot of different ideas. And so with the facility design, we are holding both options open. So whether we're going to use evaporative cooling or air cooled chillers is still yet to be determined in the design. And it's largely, largely driven by tenant requirements. And so we have built both types. We generally can operate both types. I don't think, we generally take a view on what is the best for a facility. And at the end of the day, the design, until we have the exact tenant locked down, the design is flexible. So that one is still open, but I hope that gives you a better idea of kind of how. Folks in the data center, data center industry look at water. And how much the facility may consume.
Yeah, thank you very much. My second question, now certainly the site limitations wouldn't allow you to go fully renewable onsite self generate. But there is some roof space up there. Will, will the building at least be solar ready, built for self generation in part in the future?
So there's not quite enough land to make a meaningful impact with solar on this property specifically. So we have about 7.7 acres. And in general, that is somewhere in the neighborhood of 280,000 square feet or about rough and tough. 3,000 square meters. We only get a kilowatt per square meter. It's only three megawatts. So the whole property only gets about three megawatts of solar energy in the peak of summer. So for installing solar at the property, it's not going to be able to power the data center itself. However, we may pursue a environmental certification of the building, a lead gold certification. Which means that the materials would be sustainably sourced. There would be electric vehicle charge ports installed in the parking lot. There would be as much solar as practical on the building itself to power outlets, lighting, things like that. And the building would generally do its best to have a sustainable. Source of building materials and have a clean footprint besides the electric consumption, which generally is going to be. Again, a matter of which specific tenant comes in. So we can't build a solar farm here. But there are many tenants and actually a large majority of them in the data center industry. That do cover off all their consumption with solar farms that are in the PJM system. And so they can tie that generation one for one and they do drive that additional investment. So.
Three megawatts on property. I mean, that's still a lot of greenhouse gas emissions saved. So I know it doesn't, it's a fraction of what you're using, but it's still a huge savings. I guess this is probably more of a question for our staff. The infrastructure costs, say this company doesn't make it and goes away in 10 years. The added infrastructure that we are then left with, what, do we have any estimates on what that will cost to maintain into the future?
Well, at some point, any infrastructure needs to be replaced. And so the, the revenue that we're collecting. A portion of that should be set aside for the capital projects that would be needed in the future to replace that. So to your question, if at the end of the payback period, they stopped operations at that point. Yeah, that, we would then lose the revenue source to plan for those future replacements. But we would have a data center there. I would hope that in the. Environment in which there was such demand for these services, that the likelihood of attracting another. Operator there would be high.
And my last question is, did we have any sort of an independent? Energy Specialist Council review this MSA before it coming to us? No offense to you, we have had some bad luck with energy contracts. So I, I saw that bubble up a lot on Facebook. I have those concerns as well, that I, I think we would probably owe it to our residents to have an extra look.
So we hired Phillips Little, who is a law firm located in New York City that specifically specializes. They have a group within the practice that specializes in negotiating data center agreements. And so they looked at this from the perspective of the dynamics of the financial aspects. Did not send it out for like that particular kind of review, but it's very. Given our situation, the NIPA contract and Prairie State. Puts us in a kind of a unique position that isn't, isn't the typical financial arrangement. I think that data centers are usually approaching.
It really doesn't do anything for us in terms of our contract. I mean, it's completely separate. We don't get any opportunity to diversify our portfolio. We don't get any relief from the extra usage. I always remember people talking about data centers, like, wouldn't it be great? Cause that'll help alleviate the burden to our residents. But this isn't doing that, correct?
It isn't except that it is providing a new revenue stream to the electric utility. Through which it could establish financial resiliency in the future to accomplish projects that would be necessary. Whether it's on our resiliency side or whether it's on our diversification side. To offset, you know, the expense that would be associated with that diversification.
Laura, I don't want to speak for you, but it, it seems also potentially worth mentioning that, you know, you're, you're essentially doubling. The customer base that's paying a dollar per kilowatt month distribution charge, right? The Brattle Group, I think, is working for you all right now on double checking where all of your rates are set. But that's, I mean, that is, that is money that shows up to cover the fixed costs of your infrastructure and the O and M of your infrastructure. Not just the infrastructure that's getting built on behalf of our facility, all of your infrastructure. And then the ECA, the energy cost adjustment is pure cash. It's not, it's not netted against anything else. It is just pure money paid into the city's coffers.
And so Chris is a non-effective PPAF.
Yes.
On, on that adjustment for everybody.
Yes.
And that would change that if we're using, would it or would it not? If we're using all of the 55 megawatts and we're not using PPAF to cover the loss or any loss that we'd have, wouldn't that?
I'm sorry, I thought you said the ECA was.
No, not the ECA, just, just the overall usage that we would be using all of what.
Certainly it could offset the PPAF total.
Which would.
I wanted to emphasize something that he just said, just so that everyone understands the magnitude of this project. Because Dustin had mentioned it's 5%. Well, it's actually doubling our load. We didn't include the market power cost that will actually pass through the city. They will have a weekly bill from PJM that the city will be paying and then they will reimburse us for that weekly. And then we'll have a reconciliation at the end of the month. But it, it's a really big deal for us because they'll be using as much energy as everyone in the city. So just want to make sure that everybody understood that.
Yeah. And, and just to, just to say it's, so we have established long-term cost for Prairie State. We have the construction bond we've got to pay off. We have admin costs. We have any potential laws from selling. Our fixed long-term power purchase that we're committed legally committed to when we sell surplus in the open market. We can, potential decommissioning costs for Prairie State that may be coming up. Potential carbon abatement costs as well. So we have a ton of potential costs coming from Prairie State. The reasonable thing to do would be, let's take a percentage of this windfall and just pitch it towards Prairie State.
I just want to make sure that you understand that NIPA actually is now saving. Knowing what the decommissioning date is, they are setting aside reserves to pay for the decommissioning costs.
I, I speak as a long-term resident of Potavia. My biggest horror is getting a bill in, in 2042 that says, you know, give, give me your. 55,000 Dallas special assessment.
For sure.
Yeah. So, so anything that we can do to hedge our bets for our commitment to Prairie State is a good thing.
Exactly.
And that's really just a bookkeeping function more than anything, you know, from an infrastructure perspective, which is cheap. So good.
Other questions?
This was in the memo a little bit, but the impact to the study that the Brattle Group is doing currently.
Yes.
Just curious if, any thoughts on that?
Well, they will certainly consider that revenue source as being able to offset the costs that are identified in both. The resiliency study and should this be approved factor into the, the rate study as well.
I think the one thing that stood out to me is, you know, all the other big things that we've done in the city in the time I've been on the council. This is one where they're coming in and putting up $18 million to start to get the infrastructure to get to a building that's not even built yet. And a $500 million investment into a building in one spot. I mean, that to me has got to be the biggest thing that we've had development wise in this city ever. So, you know, I look to that and I also look at, these are popping up all over the place. I mean, there's groups out there that have gone out and bought into a power plant just to make sure that they have the power supply to run their business. So, you know, this is a really big deal and I think it's only going to keep growing.
Can I make one other point?
Sure.
Because I have heard a few say that possibly other data centers will come in.
Because I have heard a few say that possibly other data centers will come in. We wouldn't be able to do that without securing more power through ComEd, that can take years and a lot of money. So, that probably is farther into the future, and not going to happen. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Yeah, I mean, the timeline issue is always there. You know, the fact is, Illinois is the only state in the Midwest that actually exports power. So, that's all the potentials there, right? So, but we haven't looked yet, right? So, because we never had a look, right? So until we start looking, we just don't know.
And our industrial park is adjacent to the ComEd feeder lines. I mean, it's not cheap to get there, but we've got a pole line there.
I look at it, if we have another data center come in, we have another partner to talk to about raising the bar for all.
Alice?
A few comments. I like the location of it as well, that it's not as close to the residential area. And obviously, I like having a big revenue source for a general fund. But, I'm not clear, really, on the environmental impact that it will have. Is it possible to do? So what I've heard from residents is that they would like to have an environmental impact study done, to see how this will affect our water supply. There are a lot of stories about data centers being built, and communities having problems with some issues environmentally. So is that something that we could do?
So actually, we already did that. Trotter and Associates, who all of you are familiar with, has been working on our wastewater treatment facility upgrade. We asked them, based on the scenario of the cooling towers, you know, do we have the capacity? And looking at what the existing, you know, what the future looks like for the wells that we have right now. And we do have enough water to supply. However, there are infrastructure upgrades due to the age of the infrastructure that is in that part of the industrial park. Probably about $1 million in improvements would need to be made in order to supply that water in an efficient manner. So, Jeremy has taken a look at it, and Trotter and Associates have taken a look at it, and that's what they say. We could service the amount of water that they need, but we would need to have that infrastructure improvement made.
I've also read about water being contaminated in communities. So I'm not just talking about the, you know, amount of water, but just other environmental issues that-
Sure, they may want to speak to pretreatment prior to discharge in the cooling tower scenario. Do you do pretreatment?
Yes, absolutely. So, the facility for all of the discharge, whether it be from the domestic waste facilities or the industrial waste facilities, would do pretreatment to make sure that they sit exactly and well within the specification provided by the city and the engineers that have built it. So, we may do some settling, we may do some clarification to the wastewater, we may dilute with rainwater, something like this, to, for any potential brine solution, so it's not corrosive to pipes. But, we definitely do not want to, you know, go outside the sewer spec, because then, the sewer spec is written for a reason. We would then lose our sewer right where we connect to it. And so, we are extremely diligent about how that system is designed, and every single tenant that comes into our facility is going to actually check our work, and look down at our engineering drawings, make sure that we actually meet the requirements, because the last thing they want is their servers coming down because we didn't do our sewer properly. So all of that is very important, that we get that stuff right, and we definitely understand your concerns there.
You know, but part of this is, when we talk about data centers, they're held to a 4/9 standard, right? Which means they've got to be up 99.99 times, right? And 5/9s, things have changed, okay? So, the engineering required to maintain that is exceptional, right? So, it's definitely not slap work, because it can't be slap work, you're not going to meet your SLA, you're not going to be competitive, you're not going to make any money, right? So all these things kind of tie together, to make these buildings hyper-efficient. And if anything like a contaminant is going to mess, has potential to mess up their operations, they're just not going to do it, right? Because what will happen is that in their client, and I'm just speaking for your nose, it's going to shut me off if I get too far, within their contracts, they're going to have an uptime requirement with their clients, right? And then there may, in some cases, be a financial penalty if they can't make it, right? So what that means is that these buildings are designed to make sure they can be up like that. And 5/9s, is that even, is that even two hours a year? Like, what do you say 5/9s?
No, so there's 8,760 hours in a year, so 5/9s is 1 in 10,000, so that only gives you about 40 minutes.
Exactly, 40 minutes a year where they can be done. So, yes, keep that in mind. This wasn't planned, by the way, so.
Any other questions or comments? We still got them up here? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Alice?
We want to ask if there are any residents here that want to comment on it?
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to comment about this this evening? Susan, come on up.
I don't know what I can move. I feel like I can't see you guys.
Oh, sorry about that.
Susan Russo, Batavia. Here are my concerns with this proposed data center. First, why is this service agreement being brought for approval before the Brattle Group has had an opportunity to complete the Integrated Resource Plan and other rate studies? I take particular issue with the following statement in the memo dated July 9th. Quote, "If we provided the data center with their energy from our power sales agreement with NIPA and Prairie State, we would have to acquire energy in the volatile open market, exposing us and our ratepayers to potentially dramatic swings in the cost to provide service." End quote. Buying energy on the volatile open market is not the only way to acquire electricity. In fact, a primary purpose of one of the Brattle Group's studies is to determine how and when Batavia can utilize alternative resources when its electricity needs exceed the amount purchased from NIPA, without having to buy electricity on the open market. Agreeing to this service agreement slams the door shut on these opportunities. Batavia is spending $800,000 on the Brattle studies. Why would Batavia make a major energy decision like this one before Brattle has completed any of its four studies, and without the benefit of Brattle's expertise? Second, this service agreement does absolutely nothing to improve Batavia's dependence on Prairie State's coal-fired electricity. As was stated repeatedly in the recent energy survey, Batavia residents are frustrated with Batavia's long-term commitment to the Prairie State coal plant, and want future energy agreements to avoid the mistakes of the past while ensuring transparency and public input. A recent study done about data centers in the Commonwealth of Virginia noted, "Due to the lack of transparency, such as non-disclosure agreements by the data center industry, and with participation by government entities and utilities committed to keep public information to a minimum, gathering information for this study is more difficult than it should be. There is nothing open source about this industry." This evaluation should sound very familiar to Batavians. The lack of transparency is exactly what we have been dealing with ever since Batavia contracted with NIPA to purchase electricity from Prairie State. And this contract, this service agreement, does nothing to fulfill what has at least been implied to be a commitment to, or a promise to, or at least an attempt to alleviate our dependence on Prairie State and use the power we buy from Prairie State and do not use for many parts of the year through the use of a data center. So we're getting a data center, if you approve this thing, without addressing Prairie State energy at all. And finally, this service agreement does not adequately address or protect Batavia's interests. Batavia needs to answer the following questions. Why is Batavia reimbursing this company for the $18 million in infrastructure costs? Data centers are unique, and data centers need to pay for the costs for their infrastructure and energy needs, period. Is the compensation paid to Batavia under the service agreement adequate? I know you're saying it's a lot, but is it adequate? How does it compare to the compensation paid to other utilities by other data centers? We haven't, we, the public doesn't have any information or any indication in the conversation tonight that that was examined. I believe Ms. Newman even said that Phillips and Little did not look at the financial aspects of this contract. Who did? Who compared it to other sources, other utilities and other data centers? Next, where is the accompanying water service agreement? What environmental and water supply studies have been done to ensure that water usage does not negatively impact Batavia residents' water supply and water quality? I heard a little bit about that, but where's the actual written study that shows that? What provisions is Batavia DC Corp. making to provide itself with backup energy? Will these provisions guarantee Batavia residents that these backup systems will not produce air noise or carbon dioxide pollution? And finally, why is there no provision that allows Batavia to terminate the agreement under certain clearly defined conditions? Batavia is already committed to a long-term, no-termination contract with NIPA. Why would it enter into another agreement with no termination possibility ever? Please, do not vote for this service agreement until these and other critical questions have been thoroughly answered. Thank you.
Anybody else? Did you want to make any comments about the questions she asked?
Response from them.
Any responses?
Yeah, I'm not happy to say if you were-
Sure, if you want to come up again for the mic.
Appreciate the comments very much. I'll try to address the things that I think I'm in a position to address.
Well, I really didn't want to hear from you.
Okay.
Actually, I would like to hear, actually, I would like to hear a response, so I believe you could have a response now.
Okay. This is your problem, not his.
Just on the, I think there may be some, it may be worth addressing some of the actual mechanics of how the finances work, given some of your comments. So, first, none of the volatile market purchases, the city's not exposed to them at all.
I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, okay, I'll move past that. Secondly, the comment about the Brattle Group's reports, and why this would be entered into ahead of them being done. It's worth noting that the major rate that the Brattle Group's report will address, that we're subject to, is a distribution charge. The distribution charge is not fixed in our contract. It will be adjusted based on the results of the Brattle Group. We wear that risk, not the city.
I'm concerned about the- At this point in time.
Yeah, this, your comments about reliance on Prairie State, I'm not in a position to make any comments on that, that's certainly a city issue. I would say that because we are getting our energy from somewhere other than Prairie State, we don't actually affect the reliance of the city on Prairie State. I mean, from my seat.
That's why it's their issue, okay?
So, if I could-
Not blaming you for that.
If I could respond to that, so, the, this project is obtaining their energy from a completely different source. So, the Brattle Group is looking at, we currently obtain all of our energy needs through our contract with NIPA, and how we will acquire those needs in the future. There will be one way that this group is going to acquire their energy, and it's going to be under the sub-account to PJM, so there's nothing that is going to be decided about the Brattle Group that will have an effect on the energy source for this project.
I need some clarification on that point. In your email, you said there would be no agreement between DC Corp. and PJM, only Batavia and DC Corp. So I think to follow up on Susan's concern, we have not decided yet how our energy policy moving forward, that will inform the IRP. In my mind, and I was trying to find the language that's in some of our memos about the city being in support of and working towards the state's goals of 100% renewable by whatever it is, like 2050 or whatever the date is. So how are we positioning this contract between us and them for their power in this master services agreement to get us toward that goal?
So maybe Peggy could speak to this. We have a PJM, we have an agreement with PJM, and they will be a sub-account to our PJM.
Is that the exclusive, only way, under the sun, that they get their energy delivered to them, or do we have some power in this conversation to say, "We are moving towards renewables, we are moving towards carbon neutral, and so as part of this agreement, if you move to Batavia, this is the way our energy will be structured"?
Not unless Illinois law changes, and that becomes a regulatory requirement for us.
It is worth just, I mean, talking about the simplicity of how power gets billed, right? There's both delivery and supply, right? Batavia's providing the delivery mechanism for electrons, the supply of electrons comes to us through PJM, right? It's two separate things.
Hi, may I please? I'd like to, you know, just challenge what you just said, Laura, about Brattle, and what they're looking at. I've been told that Brattle is also taking into consideration, if we move towards greater electrification, and actually start using the 55 megawatts we get from Prairie State, what other sources will we be, will be available to us?
That's accurate.
Okay, and if, or if, well, anyway, so what I'm saying here is that by carving out this special arrangement for energy to this data center, you are giving up the opportunity to look, to use part of your Prairie State power, and to find another more renewable or cleaner source of power for a data center like the one that they're proposing. That's what I'm saying. You've given up. You've given up, if by approving this agreement, you're giving up that opportunity to allow Brattle to advise you as to how to plan for energy for a data center of this nature.
And I think that takes us closer to that point.
Yeah.
I don't see that at all.
If we don't have excess that we sell at the market, whether it's at a loss or to profit, if we don't have that excess, then we are required to go out and get more to provide to whoever needs it. And at that point, we can decide wherever we want to get the power from.
But you've locked it into doing it through this PJM subaccount. That's my point.
No other way to get the power in there. PJM is the provider. There's no other way to do that.
They won't sign $500 million without knowing.
Is there another grid that you know about that we don't know about?
No, 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 no. But somebody, what you're doing by, because you're getting that on that wholesale market or the retail market, instead of locating a specific source that potentially is clean or renewable for the capacity that you need to get, to put into PJM than to get the power to the data center. I know, I'm not, I know how this works, and I'm not saying that there's another grid by any stretch of the imagination, I know that, but you're, you're giving up the opportunity to find, to find your own sources to buy that capacity, to buy that energy. That's what you're doing.
But we would need someone on the other side who is coming to us and saying, here is what we would like you to do.
They're coming to you and they're saying, we need this. I'm saying, take the time to figure out something better.
I think that they understand the effects financially on their projects of the different sources of energy for their facilities, and that they have come to us saying, this is the arrangement that works for us.
I think you're missing an opportunity. That's what I'm saying. I think you are missing an opportunity.
You show me the baseload and how to transmit it here, and we'll explore it. There's no baseload. Where's the wind?
Brattle can do that.
Where's the solar?
Brattle can do that.
From where? And we're going to pay them more money, more consulting fees, right? That's what you're proposing?
It may also be worth retouching on something Riley said earlier, right? So there's, at the end of the day, we are not the consumer of the electricity, the tenants, the tenants who bring the servers and the GPU infrastructure inside are the consumers. Many of those companies, lots of them, if not all of them, that are primarily in this space voluntarily contract with renewable facilities to offset and match the power that gets physically consumed at the facilities where their computers exist. So it may not appear in this room like there is a matching renewable electron being purchased by a tenant that is actually using the electricity, but that is very likely the case because of the way most of these companies approach their environmental goals and standards.
And just to reinforce what he just said there, this industry, you have to get very specific on the available sites, the available infrastructure, the available power, it's very specific. You can't just build these things anywhere, right? So what happens is that you're not necessarily always going to have the option, I want the power to come from here, or I want it to green over here, right? So what's normal in the industry is do offsets, like they'll do a wind farm, right? And that wind farm may be hooked up to PJM, right, which may offset it, right? But power is a fungible thing, right? You have, I mean, if it comes from a baseload battery, a coal fire plant, or a natural gas plant, or, you know, the, or a solar panel on your roof, the ultimate machinery doesn't care. Power's power, right? When you talk about a data center, they need a baseload. What a baseload is, is a minimum amount of electricity to operate at a profitable level, right? And you're not, and it's very rare, unless if you're directly plugged into a nuclear plant or directly powered into a coal plant, that you're going to get that 24/7 to satisfy that 5-9 uptime requirement, okay? His business has to be, can, has to be up all year except for 40 minutes, or he suffers a penalty, right? So what that means is that he needs a reliable baseload. He's only going to get a reliable baseload if he goes to PJM. And PJM has diversified power sources on their grid regardless, right? Now, if he says, because his clients are coming to him, I need this offset with renewables, then on his business, he can go and say, thank you, Mr. Customer, I will go ahead, we will offset this by investing in this wind farm, this solar farm, or whatever, right? That's the nature of the business, because keep in mind, it's very specific on the site requirements, the customer requirements, the power requirements, which don't always equate to what you want from a power generation perspective, right? So there's ways to kind of get around that and satisfy those needs, because beforehand, you need that baseload to satisfy that 5-9 requirement. They could only be down 40 minutes a year. You're welcome.
So my understanding is with this data center, if they're at their peak capacity, we basically, the city of Batavia, we're at our peak capacity for energy, providing energy?
Yes.
So where does that put us for any type of growth or any other industrial or commercial development that may want to come to Batavia? Do we have to say no to anybody else?
Our 55-megawatt contract still provides a sufficient area for other types of, for instance, manufacturing and things like that.
It's not a large data center.
Yeah.
Not another large data center. So this data center is not, I think this was stated earlier, I'm just making sure I understand, is not coming from our current NMPA Prairie State.
Correct.
Okay.
I wanted to touch on that, because we did have the conversation, we talked about it. Did we want to structure it that way? They initially came in and talked about using our bundled rates, but it's just too risky for us as a small utility to take that on, you know, because we would be having to go out and secure contracts. We didn't, we didn't want to take that risk. So that's why it's structured the way it is.
There's nothing stopping us from taking the additional revenue and paying down any Prairie State liabilities as well.
Thanks. Jim, I think I heard what you're saying in, so the reality is, right now, we're getting our energy from a coal-burning power plant. By going to PJM, that's a more diverse portfolio, so the reality is that will most likely have more renewable sources in it. So I appreciate what you're saying, Susan, that's, you know, I understand that, you know, you think we're missing an opportunity. I would say we're missing opportunity if we don't go down this path, because this is going to give us leverage to do other things. This is going to be able to put us in a position where we are going to be able to make some decisions. And I share your frustration, Susan, because I've been on this council for a long time, and we've been, and I wasn't here when the, when the decisions were made originally, but the reality is, that's, that's, that's the hand we've been dealt with. This can get us closer to a better situation than being just solely tied to coal-burning power plant.
I really appreciate this for getting a chance to understand some of these details, but there's a few discrepancies that are bubbling up in my head. So one of them is, so if I understand, the way that we are then structuring our Brattle Group study in 20 years or whenever Prairie State goes away, and we are looking at the city's demand, are we including this data center in that, or will that be permanently carved out to always go separately?
So to the extent, what they're paying for their energy cost is basically a pass-through for us. It's only the ECA, which is fixed by this agreement forever. But then there's also the demand charge and the administrative fee. The demand charge and the administrative fee could be something that, based upon the cost of service study and the rate study, that Brattle Group addresses, and they can take that into consideration.
ECA is fixed forever.
Yes, under this agreement for this customer.
And then, something that's been said before when we have debated renewables, when we've talked about those peak times, when we have to go out to the market, it's been framed, or maybe it was a different usage, as the dirtiest coal that we can get, or the dirtiest energy often, because we are not in control, the dirtiest option because we are using what's on the market.
You know, I think that comes into play when we talk about the, you know, Illinois itself. If Illinois becomes a net importer of energy because it can't meet the capacity, then it is likely to have to import energy from surrounding Midwestern states, which have the dirtiest coal plants versus Prairie State, which is one of the newest coal plants built. And while it may by volume be a large emitter, it's because it's a 1,600-megawatt plant, and it's, it's a pretty massive plant, but it has all of the latest environmental technology on it.
So with our subcontract with PJM for this MSA, how long is that contract term?
It's an account, not a contract.
Yeah, it's an account. Okay.
It really is an online portal to facilitate the movement of money.
So if you came in and like four years from now, you're like, peace out, have a good day, then that basically shuts it down.
That's correct. And the agreement is structured such that any accounts receivable risk that the city has, the city can cover off from a collateral request to us. We don't have a way to put, like, the contract doesn't make it possible for us to put the city in a negative financial position.
Right, right. That was just my concern of, you know, if you were to leave, do we, kind of like where we are with Prairie State, we're stuck with this contract, you know? Would we put ourselves in the same boat for our residents to be like, well, now we negotiated that, but if it just like cuts off, it's like a tenant leaving a rental.
Yeah, if we abandon the facility, the city's obligation to the facility goes away.
Yeah, I was just gonna, because I know Jen and Abby both said it, but, and it's a legitimate concern about somebody leaving a business or whatever, just keep in mind the investment they're making here and what this building is when it's done. The only way they're leaving is if they sell it to another data center company, so it's, I mean, it's a.
I get that, I just had to get that out there to understand.
Oh, no, for sure. Yep, yep.
Yeah. They're not in a business to say, we're going out, but knowing that we have this trigger point with this contract, you know, it is up to us to ask all these questions to make sure everything is crossed.
Absolutely. And I wanted to address the one thing that we didn't talk about yet was the water side of it. I think until we know what kind of system they're going to build out there, then we have to figure that out. I just, you know, I don't know if you know yet what, what system you're going to use, because you don't have all your tenants lined up, and you don't know what system is going to make financial sense for that. So I think at that point, then we have to get all of the, you know, will that be to another contract, or?
Will be part of their building plans that they submit for permit.
This MSA does not address the water needs.
And honestly, it gets so granular, because they can either do water-cooled cabinets, they can get water cooled down to the chip, they can do.
And until you know that, you don't know what the water usage is going to be.
They still cringe at water in the data center, so yeah, it all changes for sure.
Good question. So are we going to, if we agree to this MSA, are we going to also then see a contractor, some sort of agreement with PJM to create their subcontract?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, I can't, it's really more administrative than you think. It's quite literally an online portal, subaccount, to make sure that the, the way that the electrons are settled financially is in a separate bucket so that we can see the invoices correctly, and it's not co-mingled with the city's stuff. It's not a contract per se.
Right.
Yeah.
Alice?
Just a clarifying question for residents that are listening. This data center, how, with how the agreement has been written, this data center will not drive rising costs for electricity for our residents, correct?
If anything, it'll lower them, because the PPAF would change.
The only other thing that I would mention on the comments is the termination discussion. And while I certainly hear where you're coming from, and it sounds like the Prairie State issue has been one that, you know, I think folks wear kind of emotionally here, I think it's a big deal. The reality, though, is if this agreement were to have a termination for convenience clause for the city, this investment can't be made in the community. Like, we can't get tenants, we can't raise capital for a half billion dollars, the facility will be, will die on a term like that. But again, I want to emphasize how much work that we put into with the city to make sure that this document was structured in such a way, the city cannot get upside down financially on it.
How much do we think our PPAF will change?
At this point, there's no way to know. How long would it take you to figure that out? How long will?
Would need a crystal ball, because the PPAF is also factored by the by the cost of capacity. Capacity cost is crazy. We had a discussion over the last month, that the capacity cost went from 29 to 269, and so that's what's driving cost increases for our customers, that's going to start in August. It's totally not related to the data center at all, it's our own cost of capacity based on our use over the last year.
The capacity we're responsible for, we pay for.
Right, right. No, I'm just saying, it's not something we should really hang our hopes on too much.
No, but it's definitely good for the general fund, for the franchise fee.
Property tax.
Right.
Instead of property tax.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, like, other benefits, the facility is, it's kept alive by the connection to the grid, the power, the connection to the internet and the fiber that will connect it to other data centers and to the loop and to maybe directly to some clients. Like, if we have a client in our facility and they are 10 miles away, we might do a direct line. But the facility brings this infrastructure in, like a beefier sewer maybe that comes out, or like a new takeoff for the fire protection system water. The facility kind of is like a tree that brings these roots down and this infrastructure in, so we have to do a lot of telecom trenching to bring more fiber into the area. These will all be done as new builds, as overbuilds, so all this conduit will be in the ground to bring further connectivity. From the system perspective, the, Chris had touched on it, but essentially what we're doing is we are paying the same distribution charge on a per-kilowatt basis, but because we're taking power directly from the source, you know, it's still at medium voltage on your distribution voltage, but right where it comes down from the high-voltage system, it's like we are, you know, one person in line getting lunch like everyone else, say 10 people get lunch, we pay, you know, 10 units for our lunch, everyone else pays one. So we're only 10% of the work to serve us the lunch, but we bring in like half the revenue. So the distribution charge is supposed to cover distribution costs, and distribution to residential, you know, ratepayers means bringing it up to a 1-kilowatt service to every house. Now, all the 1-kilowatt services in our facility are way downstream from where we're taking service from the city, so we're paying for all of that. So essentially, we're just, we're beefing up the pool for that infrastructure in the rest of the city, because we're paying the same amount per unit of electricity, but we're taking it much higher upstream. And I think that theme is similar from a telecom perspective. We'll have to bring new conduit kind of all over, and that will bring more opportunities for businesses in the area, should they want a higher degree of connectivity. We know that, you know, fiber and, and heavy-duty telecom costs a lot of money. A facility like this can afford to trench in those conduits and bring that stuff into the community, whereas, you know, if you were to go to AT&amp;T and say, I want, you know, 100, 400 gig wave services to do this special business here in town, they would say, you know, like, sure, that'll be $50 million. So that, it kind of, that conduit, that infrastructure on the sewer side, water side, electricity side, telecom side, is brought here by the data center. So in terms of benefits, if the data center reaches COD and is fully built, and then it happens to go away, like, all of those routes that it built are still here, that infrastructure can be used repurposed by the city, and our And our things that generally bring, like, that keep our society going today, like electricity, connectivity, water. And so we hope that should the, should the city's infrastructure get upgraded, that like we can be a conduit for that.
Other questions? Any other comments? Leah?
If this gets approved tonight, what's the next step? Like, when does it come back to council or does it come back to council?
It would be on the city council agenda for the 21st.
And then after that?
And then after that, it would then go through the building permit approval process.
Is that where we might see some more environmental impacts at that point?
Yes, we would be reviewing the documents and there's, when they have their 75% plans, we'd have a development review meeting with the team to give them advice before they submit their 100% plans. And then depending upon if they are seeking any variances, they may have to go through the plan commission process for that before the plans are ultimately approved. Is that accurate, Drew?
So the development, like I guess, as Laura was saying, if it does need any sort of variances, they would have to go through that process. At the minimum, it would require a design review. Data centers are permitted to use, but we do require a designer view for new buildings before they go to permit. So that would be slotted in as part of the process. And we've had some preliminary conversations with the developer about that.
At that time, you'd be able to look at the water usage, water hookups, electric hookup, all of the things that would normally go through for something like that.
Actually, that just, I mean, Dustin mentioned that he had been communicating with Steve Allen about some of this, and I'm just curious, did Steve or Rahat or Jeremy have any thoughts or anything or?
Since this all resides on me. So Alderman Lehman, one of the things that you said a little bit earlier, and I, I don't want to scare them at all, but you know, you're absolutely right. We have two extension cords out to the universe and they are limited to 150 megawatts. So PJM accounts aside, anything else like that, we are limited in how much we can bring in. When these guys ramp up to 50 megawatts, which I'm excited for, that does impact the ability of the town to grow. It does impact our ability to move towards electrification and things of that nature. So if this is to move forward, if you guys are to approve this, then tomorrow I will be putting a load letter into ComEd to increase the ability that we can import from them. And this is a, this is a hard number, 150. The protected devices on the transmission system will shut us off. That is not negotiable. This isn't like, we can kind of sneak some things here. No, we're done. So that is a process that will need to start immediately if these guys come on. So knowing that they have some construction, knowing that they have some ramp up period, knowing they've got a lot of fiber things to build and other infrastructure to take into account, that is something that we're going to have to begin immediately so that we can continue to, to move towards our goals of electrification and things of that nature. All that being said, we can be doing all of that in parallel. And as Alderman Peaper indicated earlier, you know, he had a transformer, well, he personally, you didn't blow up your transformer for me, lad. Sorry about that.
I was gone that week.
Yes, you were gone? Okay.
I was on vacation that week.
Okay.
Don't worry.
It's on record, so we got to know to that. Good. But, you know, we do know these things take some time to get, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of renewable infrastructure being built. These manufacturers are just slammed. I'm sure we've all read about copper tariffs recently in the news, so unfortunately those transformers are filled with copper. And, and so are those the ones that these guys have to, that these guys have to purchase. So we're all looking at significant costs and lead times for all of this stuff. So this is not to make any, this is not in any way, shape or form to scare anybody. It's just, we're dealing with, we're literally dealing with physics at this point where, you know, all the financial transaction stuff doesn't matter. You can only suck so much electricity down a wire of a certain size. So, and that's, and that's just where we're at with this. And that's a, that's a good position for us to be in.
Question?
Sir?
20, 30 years ago, we didn't have those two hoses.
You're right.
Going through Fermilab around that to get to the, the main lines.
You're right.
If in the event we decided we needed more power, we would have to go through a similar process like we did to look for another way to bring power in.
Exactly.
Into the system. So that's not out of the realm of possibilities. It's just another big hurdle to go through to get that.
Our biggest advantage is that it's already there. So if I just say, I'm not building anything new, I'm just needing more, that's generally a little bit easier of a request.
And that was going to be one of my questions is, would the pole lines that we have, would they support another round to bring in?
So the short answer is yes. The, the longer answer is we'll need to do an engineering study because the wire that's up there will increase in size. We'll have to make sure that the poles can support all of the physical infrastructure that would need to be there. We have to change hardware. We have to do a lot of brain work and then the physical work would, would have to take place over-
And of course, there's a cost to that and, you know, planning and everything else and engineering, but that's not out of the realm of possibility if we decide if future city council, not me, will get to decide what they want to do with that.
Oh, no, I'll be back in August for this. I'll be back in August. But, because again, like I said, it takes four years to get a transformer. Of this transmission class transformers are four years.
Worse than ambulance.
We bought three of them in 2006 for 4.5 million. One of them it takes, and we got them in nine months. Okay? So today, that's probably a five to six million dollar transformer and takes four years. So that, that, that's why, that's-
Making them.
Yeah, I know. So, so again, not, this is just where we're at post-COVID, you know, and, and the way things are. So it's again, not to scare anybody, it's just, these are facts. You know, this is, we hear about this every day if I'm doing my APPA conferences or, you know, listening with the IMUA or anything like that. This is all, we're all in the same boat electrically. So.
Got any questions first? People is here?
Yeah, just really not, Chris, more of a statement. So it took us about two hours to chew through this. I, I think for-
We've been chewing for months, so I know how you feel. Yeah.
Two hours tonight. I think for the sake of future conversation, it'd be nice just to do a, maybe Max or somebody else can do it, a cheat sheet. Here's summary of the project. Here's the economic impact. Here's the environmental impact. Here's the power, Potavia power capacity impact. And then here's a Prairie State impact. Just, just knock it all down for people. Because what's going to happen here pretty quickly is that as this goes down the road over the course of the year, it's just going to go all over the place as far as what this thing is and what it's not, and it's going to be ugly. I'd rather not do it, so.
Good idea. You know, just like we've done with other big projects, gives, you know, bullet points of what reality is with it and, you know, what are our obligations, what are their obligations? And, and have that just as, maybe even in a development point where we've done it in other things where we've had a, a place on the website that just explains the development.
I've got my summaries.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Again, not to detract from anything and, and the, you know, this, I've enjoyed working with them. We've, we've been, almost a year now we've been working together. So, yeah, the, you know, Riley's one line, we had a great conversation about that. I won't get into the, I won't let my geek out too much, but you know, it's, it's definitely, you know, aside from all of the benefits to the city, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of lifting, it's going to be a very busy 18 to 24 months for the electric utility. There's going to be a lot of dust flying for us. So it's, it's, it's exciting. Little, little nerve wracking, but, but exciting. We'll, we'll get there. That's what coffee's for. Okay, thank you for the questions. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Drew. Anybody else from the audience want to come up? I saw hands.
Hi, Michael Vincent, Ward 2. Just to forgive my ignorance, but this agreement, is it possible to stipulate the power purchased through PJM, the subaccount, be 30% from renewable sources or clean energy, something like that? Is that?
To find out what's available. I don't know that we've ever-
Times combined due to the site. But normally what these data centers do, and I can't speak for them, but what is normal in the industry, if a client will come and say, hey, I need, I have a sustainability requirement for my company, that 30% of my power needs to be sustainable, right? And so what the data center provider will do is they'll say, okay, I'll find you an offset that is renewable, that's either connected to the grid or connected somewhere out, out in the world where we're going to offset your, your, your carbon based power source or if we can't determine like where it's coming from.
Hypothetically, could we build that requirement into the agreement?
Probably not. No, no.
I think it's all going to be dependent on what their clientele is.
Thanks.
Another hand, come on up.
Hi, my name is David Semencheck. I just had a couple of questions and concerns. The data center has to be online for all but 40 minutes of the year, so that would probably require backup generators of some sort in case something went wrong. I'm just, so I'm just curious as to like what sort of power those would be running on if, they said it couldn't be solar, so if it, if that would be diesel or something else just to keep the, the data center running.
There's giant battery backup units in there called UPSs, which then feed either typically a diesel or natural gas generator, but I'm sure they have one of them picked out or maybe I got it right and he went and sat back down.
Diesel or natural gas is what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. I also, I noticed that there was an environmental risk slide in the Huttay's, in Huttay's presentation, and it got kind of quietly clicked through. And I sort of worry that we're quietly clicking through those concerns here as well.
That, that slide had to do with what the environmental risk is of the site in terms of hurricanes, floods, earthquakes. It wasn't the environmental risk of the, of the actual data center. It had to do with what risks are they looking at to build that property on this spot? And we have it actually a very nice, safe location where we're not going to be destroyed by a hurricane.
Great. I appreciate that. I am concerned though about the sort of the air and the water and the environmental impacts of data centers. Just from what I've read, you know, there's the XAI Center in Memphis, which is much larger, obviously. It's a very large facility, but it's made the air unbreathable for a lot of the people that live in that area. It's made the water almost undrinkable for a lot of the residents. And there's similar stories from other communities near data centers around the country. Alice had brought up a couple of those concerns earlier. The, the money coming into the city would be great, but if it comes at the expense of the air quality and the water quality, the drinking water for the residents, I'm not sure that's a trade off that we should be taking.
I don't think any trade off for our air quality or for our drinking water. That's why we had Trotter and Associates assess whether our system has the capacity in order to provide the level of service that they are looking for. You know, there are communities like Elk Grove Village, for instance, they must at this point have dozens of data centers at this point. And to my knowledge, you know, they have a very favorable outlook about what impact that those data centers have had on their community without, you know, seeing any detrimental effects like, like you've mentioned.
Okay.
But so I think it's important for a community to assess whether it will have a detrimental impact and that those things should take precedence.
Yes, absolutely. I agree with that.
But just to clarify, we did an assessment on whether or not we have enough water to give them. We did not do an assessment on the quality of the water coming out or the air quality around them.
I think they already talked about the pretreatment and they also said in terms of the air quality, it's not like it's smoke stacks, it's just heated air.
Yeah, for sure. That's what they said. But that's why we generally do independent assessments to study that, that give us an objective and third party.
We can, we can measure what's, what's coming out and whether their pretreatment is what they say that it is. We certainly can do that.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, again, just doing the little bit of research that I've done, you know, these things are out in the world already and they have had very detrimental effects on some communities. And I want to make sure that that doesn't happen to the Potavia. So thank you for your time.
Tim?
Yeah, I would, I would just challenge some of those detrimental effects. I mean, data centers actually by their nature are typically extremely clean, extremely green, try to be, you know, as Jim alluded to earlier, you know, a lot of the times, power, cooling, heating, that's money to them. All, that's what they're selling is, is the real estate and the power and the, and the cooling and the infrastructure. So, you know, I just want to put you a little bit at ease, you know, of course, yes, is it a big power suck? Yes, that's what we're worried about. And where's that baseload power coming from? And that's a whole conversation to be had. But the buildings itself and the output of the building in its given footprint, to my, in my experience, is very minimal.
And just to kind of back up a bit, so in this industry, it's a little like comparing like a 1974 like Camaro with something that's a electric car now. I mean, I mean, the industry has made incredible strides over the past, you know, 30 or 40 years. So a lot of times when you hear these horror stories, it's like, hey, when was that thing built? Right? Because the ones that are built in 2025 that we're talking about proposing here, they're highly engineered, right? And environmental impact's part of that as well because that's money, right? You have to understand is that these are run from a total cost perspective. And in any, any remediation required for any environmental impact, that, that goes against their cost too, right? So the more efficient you get, the more money you make, the more competitive you are. And, and you can lower your rates to attract more business. Okay? So this is a highly competitive field. And that's why these data centers have physically gotten smaller and more efficient so they can fit in more spaces and they get less environment, less environment impact, I'm sorry, environmentally impacted per server. So, so you can put more of them out there, right? And they can fit, they can fit more in denser locations, right? So it's a much different story from 2025 versus, you know, 30 to 40 years ago.
Austin?
So I'm just doing some quick research on the topic as well for the XAI example that was specified. At least according to Politico here, they're self-powered with 35 methane gas turbines, which this would not have that at all. Where they're going to, we're going to be getting our power from the grid and not onsite generation. So I don't see that level of concern being a problem here. So that should help.
Would someone care to make a motion on the resolution 2025-82R authorizing execution of an MSA with Potavia DC Corp? So moved. Second. By Malay, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Parazha. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Peper.
Aye.
Farrenbach.
Aye.
Anderson, vocal singer. That's 11 and 14.
Okay, that'll go on to city council, the next meeting. And now we have a presentation on committee debriefing on Bernadette Lane and South Potavia Avenue Water Main Replacement Projects, successes and lessons learned.
I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Now that we're in the final punch list phases of the Bernadette Lane and South Potavia Ave Water Main Replacement Project, I wanted to take a few minutes to debrief council of the overall project scope, the successes and the lessons learned. The Bernadette Lane and South Potavia Ave Water Main Replacement Project addressed several critical infrastructure issues such as catastrophic pipe failures in undersized mains, while also increasing overall system performance and reliability. But the heart of this project lies in how it was managed with our residents in mind, especially given the complexity of working in high traffic school zone and within a very tight I dot right of way. From construction commencement, our leadership team prioritized clear, consistent communication. Directly affected residents were kept in the loop every step of the way through door notices, mailers, SMS text messages, CMS boards, coordination with L Scusson Leadership and direct door-to-door outreach. We made every, excuse me, every effort to ensure every homeowner, every parent and every stakeholder knew what to expect. The result, a long, complex and invasive project with very few complaints, a rare and powerful testament on how important public trust and communications are to the, to the work we do. This level of success wouldn't have been possible without the collaboration- possible without the collaboration of our water utility operations staff, senior administrative staff, and our consulting and contractual partners. I'd like to introduce Mr. Kyle Welty, project engineer with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., who provided day-to-day engineering leadership and helped guide this project from design and through these final construction phases.
Kyle?
Jeremy? Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. I will try to keep this very brief. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Even better. Alrighty, so Jeremy said, my name is Kyle Welty. I'm a project manager with Engineering Enterprises, and we were in charge of designing and performing construction management for the Bernadette Lane and South Potavia Ave Water Main Replacement Project. Brandon Kramer, who's on the slide, was unable to be here, but I wanted to make sure that he got all the credit because he did most of the fieldwork and 90% of the heavy lifting. So a quick background on the project. This is Water Main on Bernadette Lane, Concord and South Potavia. So it's aging infrastructure with a history of catastrophic water main failures resulting in public and private property damages. Sort of like a ticking time bomb, if you will. Once you know water mains bad, breaks, it's prone to break again, and it's usually at the worst time of day and flood somebody's house inevitably. So the goal was to provide new infrastructure and then also to upsize the water main to allow more water to efficiently pass through the city and serve different parts of the community. The general scope, there's a location map showing the area. The overall scope are to replace the water main on Bernadette Lane, upsizing it from eight inch to 12 inch. Replace water main on Concord Street and add a sampling station so that staff could continually sample the water quality. Replace the water main on South Potavia Ave from Bernadette Lane north to Oak Street. And then also to replace all existing water services for each house from the main to their B box, while also adding water services stubs to homes on South Potavia Ave that aren't currently in the city, so that when they hopefully join city water in the future, it'll be a much easier process for them. So, construction services that we provide, one being construction administration. So this is a kind of catch-all term for reviewing material submittals from the contractor and permit coordination. So we permit all the water main through the IEPA. And also with it being on Route 31, it's also permitted through iDOT, which is a extremely extensive back and forth. So we submitted the initial permit approval or initial permit application on August 6th of 2024 and didn't receive the completed permit until April 24th of 2025. And to touch on what one of the residents mentioned with the iDOTs, with that being a state road, they're fully in charge and have very strict requirements for traffic control and what contractors are allowed to do. One of them being they're not allowed to change speed limits. What they must conform to are adequate taper lengths so that traffic going, the speed limit can navigate the area safely and also very extensive advanced warning signs. We also perform construction layouts, which is our surveyors going onsite, laying everything out, and then doing the subsequent record drawings, picking up all the location of all the new infrastructure after the fact. And then really the meat of what we do is the construction observation and documentation. So we have an engineer, Brandon Kramer's onsite full-time, monitoring all the work, making sure that it conforms to city standards, and being out there to track quantities, prepare pay estimates, make sure we're staying on budget, and make any sort of field changes as necessary. So underground infrastructure, as you know, you can't see it before you start, so you're relying on maps from 100-year-old infrastructure, a lot of unknown situations, and so field changes are very common. Just a brief outline of the schedule. This was a very efficient project. Our pre-construction meeting was in March. Completion date was in June, which the contractor met. And then we are now doing project closeout. There's a few punchless items, and then that heat wave that we got hit with kind of messed up with the sod installation. So we've got a little bit of sod left to do that we'll save when the weather gets a little bit better. A few highlights of the project. So we installed a little over 2,800 feet of 12-inch water main and 490 feet of 8-inch water main. We installed 39 water services from the water main to the B box. And then, as I mentioned, saw the water sampling station. And then what we, we tried our best to install stubs and strategic tees for future infrastructure expansion to provide large diameter water main through other areas of town. And really, the, what we deal with on a day-to-day basis are, is construction challenges. One of them being existing utilities. As I mentioned, you have 100-year-old storm sewer infrastructure out there, plus gobs of gas, electric, existing water main that's very, very fragile when you dig around it. And you're constantly trying to make your best attempt at knowing where that stuff is at before you start digging. On top of that, iDOT typically doesn't allow water main to be installed underneath their roads in an open-cut manner. This is a very, very rare exception. And they make us do what's called a bore and jack. So you take a steel casing pipe and you basically push it under the ground so that you're not open cutting a trench across Route 31. And we had to do that in two locations. There's a picture there of kind of the mess that it makes when you have to, the size of the hole that's required. And then you're fighting constant rocks and boulders. So if you encounter rocks or boulders that are larger than one-third of the diameter of that casement pipe, they have to stop and send a person physically down there to extract the rock. It gets very, very tedious, and we ended up actually up sizing due to some ground conditions. We, larger boulders that we were not expecting, to make sure that it could be done safe and efficiently. And then on top of it, you're dealing with ground conditions with utility trenches. Often what happens is once you have that mess of utilities in the ground, the trench backfill that you use fills up very well in a confined space. But once you encounter a trench, all that stone spills out and it makes the ground very unstable and prone to the trench walls collapsing. So it was extremely complicated. On top of that, we have the traffic control issues of working in an iDOT-controlled right-of-way. And then to add to that, we had proximity to the Alice Gustafson Elementary School and associated school traffic that gets really, really heavy in the morning when they're dropping them off and really heavy in the afternoon. Plus, you have all the local residents that live on these streets and need access to their homes throughout the day. And that comes into resident coordination is, is a very large challenge, trying to keep residents up to date on what's going on. There's nothing worse than coming home and you get the water shut off or you can't get in your driveway. And then weather, we were getting ready to do the restoration of a lot of the sod out there when those crazy storms hit and Bernadette Lane got the brunt of that entire storm, and it was a giant catastrophe. We had to pause operations, and I know it made Jeremy's job difficult, picking up branches when half of Route 31 is shut down. So it was a very difficult situation out there. And so we're really in the business of overcoming challenges. Challenges are inevitable, but that's how we react to those challenges, and really comes down to proactive communication. Projects are partnerships between the engineer out there, the city staff and the contractor. In this case, it went very, very well. As Jeremy mentioned, we use extensive resident communication. So the city has a fantastic SMS system, so they're able to blast out information in real time to all the affected residents, which is something that most cities don't have. And it's a, it's a godsend when you're out there trying to, when things change by the hour on these projects. We utilize flyers to let people know of driveway access loss and water loss, and then are constantly knocking on doors as we approach each resident to, it's so hard to judge how far you're going to go in a day based on the challenges that you find. So trying to keep people up to date on things. And then communicating with the school. Jeremy and his team did a great job of communicating with the school on a daily basis, trying to accommodate all the parents that are, you know, tend to fly through the area. And we also used changeable message boards along 31 to keep residents up to date on which roads were closed. As you saw in that last picture, that the giant hole, you have to close the road, there's really no way around it. So it's trying to keep people updated on when those roads are closing. We did our best to anticipate problem areas and just constantly be ready to adjust. And then communication is of utmost importance to project success. So it's all about, all about communication. So proactive outreach results in customer satisfaction, and rarely do we get praise from people, but we did get an email that said, I monitor social media closely, and to my knowledge, there was not one single negative comment or complaint about this project on the socials that may be at first. So that's from a city staff member. So that was always good to hear. That's what we strive for in every single project. So thank you for your time. And if you guys have any questions about the project, I'll gladly answer them. And if not, that's okay.
I'll say it's in my ward. And, you know, until the lady came up and talked about her driveway access or pulling out onto 31, I had not received a complaint about it.
Yeah.
More so comments about, oh, it was really good. They came up to my door every day and told me what was going to happen. And it was one of the comments that I got. So again, I think this is, you know, we're getting some good contractors in here, and because we do try to be proactive and we do try to have somebody out there all the time, I think it's worked really well on some of these bigger projects. And thank you for answering our question about the iDOT not allowing the speed limit change.
Yeah, they, they.
Because I don't know if we've ever done that.
No, they, they really hamstring you on what you can do. They're very specific. They drive through, take pictures. If there's any deficiencies in your traffic control, they let you know about it immediately.
They can't answer a permit request for a year.
Oh, I've got.
But they can be out there to look at that.
Yeah. I've got other projects around eight months, so it's, it's a problem.
Well, I can't say enough about the fantastic partnership that the city has enjoyed on so many projects with EEI. This was just exemplary of the way that you guys approach projects. You are so well organized and help us to keep our residents informed and all of the folks in the water department too. And the excellent communication that you had on this project, I think that people felt like, yeah, this is a very invasive project. It's going to be a big mess, but we realize what we need this project because they've seen the water main failures that are happening in their neighborhood, and they know that it's a necessary thing that they have to get through. But I was just amazed, you know, after having such an invasive project and then having the microburst happen, like right at the tail end of that, you would have thought that that neighborhood would have been like, oh, this is enough. Now, you know, the trees are down and our power is out. But no, we just, again, they were like, well, we, we all got together and we saw the electric utility out there helping us, the street department out there clearing everything up. I, even though those two bad things happened in those neighborhoods, I feel like I've heard a lot of very positive things that they have had to say about their experiences with those. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
And then we will move on to item nine, which is a committee briefing on lead water service line replacement efforts to date. What's on yours?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share an update on the initiative. That means a great deal to the water utility, our lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement program. This program is much more than replacing old lead and galvanized pipes. It's about protecting public health, modernizing our water system, and honoring our commitment to providing safe, reliable drinking water to all residents and guests of Potavia. Since launching our inventory phase in late 2020, we've secured nearly $14 million in funding, including full loan forgiveness and 0% interest through IEPA-supported loan programs. So far, we've replaced just over 700 lead and galvanized steel water service lines, covering more than five miles of infrastructure, at no cost to homeowners, not a single penny, thanks to city council's continued support. Year two is approximately 80% complete, and year three, our final and most ambitious phase, tentatively begins in August of this year. By the end of it, we expect to have replaced every single lead and galvanized steel water service line ahead of the strict 2027 regulatory, regulatory mandated replacement schedules. I believe this effort has been a team success between city council, city staff, consulting engineers, contractors, and our residents. But what I believe truly sets us apart from how we've prioritized clear, concise communication and strong community outreach every step of the way. Tonight, we'll share what we, where we started, where we are now, and what's next. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Stephen Dennison, Vice President of Engineering Enterprises. Stephen has led the engineering oversight from day one and has been an instrumental, instrumental partner to me and to the city in the successes of this very important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'm going to switch presentations here. Efficiently I can do this. All right. So many of you have seen presentations here about lead service lines, but there are some who haven't. So I'm going to try to walk the edge of trying to update those of you who have seen it and not put you to sleep because you've already seen all this material before. And those of you who haven't, hopefully you can learn something. And I really encourage those, if I speed through something, if I'm not clear on something, please speak up, ask questions. I'm happy to answer them. But for the sake of time, I am going to try to speed things up and get through this presentation fairly quickly. So again, as Jeremy said, I'm Steve Dennison with Engineering Enterprises. I've presented on this topic before and on the water treatment plant. Emily Conti, colleague of mine, has presented several times as well. We've been honored to be along with the city through this entire journey on lead service lines and the imminent conclusion within the next couple of years is the way that it is shaping up here. So it's very exciting. So first of all, just an overview, what are we talking about with, with water services and lead services in particular? Well, with water services, you have the water main. Kyle was just talking about the Bernadette and Route 31 water main. So you have those out in the street, and then you have the services, the stub off that into the residence. The city owns the portion between the water main and the B box, and then the customer owns the section between the B box and the water meter. So when we're talking about partial service line replacements, we're either talking about public side partial main to curb box, partial private B box to meter, or a full, which is the entire service line. So there's many and all of these categories that have been replaced. We'll talk about that a little bit. So, and again, very high level overview. Lead and water is bad. You may have heard that. So, you know, it can be very harmful to children in particular. So it's been a huge initiative. It's been taken. It's been decades incoming, but really has picked up steam here more recently. Through Jeremy's review of the records, it appears sometime in the 1950s that lead services were no longer utilized in Potavia. So that's great, because in the city of Chicago, they were using them right up until 1986, and they have a much, much bigger problem than Potavia does. So that's when the Safe Drinking Water Act banned the use of lead in pipes was 1986. And then there's been subsequent regulations that have tried to force communities to take a proactive look at their lead and drinking water. And then 2014 hit with Flint, Michigan, and that really put it on everybody's radar and has really stimulated a lot of activity over the past decade or so. There's a map in the bottom right. It's not actually current. I couldn't find a current map. It's a few years old. But the message is, when we're looking at Illinois, has some of the highest lead service lines per capita of any state in the entire country. So it is regionally a huge problem here. Roadmap to compliance. So just high level overview, the IEPA, US EPA, IEPA, both released rules that required inventorying starting in 2023 into 2024. Potavia was way ahead of the curve on that. Jeremy jumped on it immediately and the rest of staff to get the inventorying done quickly so that you could jump on opportunities for funding and get these lead services out as quickly as possible. Jeremy also mentioned, I think, that the, the requirement as it currently stands is that in 2027, communities will need to start replacing lead service lines. Well, you'll be done by 2027 replacing your lead service line. So while others are just getting started, you'll be done way ahead of the curve and financially and responsibility-wise, health-wise, it's providing a lot of benefits to the residents here. Your program history began in about 2020 with the identification of the lead service lines. You may remember the postcards that were sent out in the upper right. That was really a revolutionary thing at the time. Not any community was doing that as far as having a QR code on a survey, going to a website, filling it out, self-identifying service lines. Staff would follow up to verify, et cetera. Really got the inventory filled out quickly, services identified that could be replaced. So it's taken a little while, but in total, about 1,200 lead service lines or galvanized service lines. but in total, about 1,200 lead service lines or galvanized service lines requiring replacement were identified. And then, and things continued from there. I identified some funding opportunities, secured funding in 2022. And that project, that first year one project was bid in 2022. Very high level. Year one was done, the between design and construction, 2022 to 2023. Year two is ongoing. That'll be wrapped up later this year. Year three, you saw the notice of award in the packet there for approval. So getting under contract, have the loan secured, and that'll be done. They'll be starting up here in the next month and then completed near the end of next year. Just a high level overview, kind of taking a sidestep. How does this construction happen? When we get into that phase, and then I'm gonna step back into the years and the progress that have happened, but might help you visualize things a little bit. Typically, there's resident meetings about three to seven days before replacement. The city staff, engineer, contractor meets with those residents, walks them through the process, answers any questions they have, gets them comfortable and prepared for when that service line replacement is gonna happen. Then they get prepared for the site. The contractor mobilizes to the site, and then they install and flush that new water service line. Happens within four hours typically. Water service is only off less than four hours. In some cases, with a partial replacement, it might be an hour or two. And then there's restoration after the fact, which we're always battling with the contractors to get done as quickly as possible. So there's concrete asphalt slotting that occurs. And then we collect all that data, and it goes into the city's ArcGIS database. It's a fantastic tool, again, revolutionary at the time, to integrate in real time the construction activity into GIS to see when these service lines were replaced. And that's been a great benefit and an additional service that's been able to be provided. There's also photos. There's the field reports. There's the inspections. Everything is included with that address in GIS. All right, going back into year one, this is stepping back a couple of years now. That was the first project. That one was utilized with 100% principal forgiveness money up the, and we used the full $4 million for that. So not a single penny of that came down on the, on the residents. That was all completely taken care of essentially a grant that you were able to use. And that was massive. You were able to replace over, the original estimate was 280 lead service lines, ended up getting slightly more than that. So construction started in the spring of 2023. You could see the breakdown of replacements that were completed, a lot of full replacements. So got a lot of those knocked out in year one program. And then we've been focusing on the partials in year two and year three. So, and then, you know, over three miles of services replaced kind of puts things in perspective. And construction was completed in basically a year after it started. Grant Excavating did that contract. They did a wonderful job. They were great to work with. And it was a grand success. And we've talked about that previously, but can go on and on about that project. Year two is ongoing. So that one is utilizing funding from the IEP up to 4.5 million. That was after there was a, we were able to secure an additional amount of money through bypass funding to get as much as possible for these replacements. That funding is 0% over 30 years. So that is a loan, but at 0% over 30 years. You're not going to get much better terms than that for any kind of loan. And it's much better funding than you could get from any other source. The simple fact is, no longer qualify based on the demographics of Batavia for principal forgiveness money. So this is the best that could, that could happen. So we just wanted to get as many done as quickly as possible with this level of funding. So we anticipated a replacement of about 400 service lines. Five Star Energy has been doing that project, started about a year ago. They have been making good progress here, really picked up steam this year and anticipate final completion next month. And they will need to work into the fall for restoration, but the lead service line related work will be finishing up within the next month or so. So there's been 340 replacements completed as of a couple of days ago, actually yesterday, I believe. And the breakdown is there. You can see a lot more of the partials, particularly from the main, which is the, to B box, which is the public side portion of the service line. Just a lot of them were replaced, presumably the resident replaced the private side at some point after the public side was put in. And so now we're going back and replacing the public side components. So that one, we're up to over two miles of service line replacements. And similarly, has been a successful project. We anticipate over 400 service lines to be replaced. And that work, again, will be going into the fall. Year three, so that's the one coming up here. That is planned to be the last one, because based on the estimates and the inventorying that's been done and the cost estimate, the funding that we have, we believe that we should be able to get the remaining lead service lines replaced with the year three program here. So that one is over $5.4 million with the loan funding from the IEP. Again, a 0% over 30-year loan term. Miller Pipeline was the low bid for that. Their bid came in about five, or 4.5 million. And then the schedule again is going to be starting here in the next month. We already had some discussions with them. We'll be having a pre-con very soon with them, but have started building relationship and getting expectations and making sure we're on the same page on a handful of things, getting materials ordered, et cetera. So they should be able to hit the ground running very quickly after they're given notice to proceed. It will take them likely over a year to complete all of the services. So we're looking somewhere before the end of next year for the completion of that project. So again, you've seen a notice of award in tonight's agenda. That'll then be approved by council. We'll finish the contracting. We do have the loan secured, and then we will be able to move towards construction in August. All right. So just a overview, just to wrap everything up. So the year one program funding was 4 million with 100% principal forgiveness money. Year two was the 4.5 million with the loan terms of 30-year and 0%. And year three will be 5.4 plus million with the same terms. Again, no direct cost to the homeowners. So when we're replacing them, they're not getting a bill for the work. The replacements to date have been over 600 between years one and year two. Can see the breakdown of the fulls versus the partials there in a total of over five miles of service line that has been installed. So this is actually incorporates the fact that city staff, through emergency repairs, et cetera, or other circumstances have been replacing them as they've been going along, too. Sometimes the circumstances aren't such that it can be put on the contractor to replace it. So they've done about 82 or so of their own. So actually, about 669 services have been replaced in total. So again, reiterate that bottom point there, anticipate completing the replacement of all lead service lines in the city by 2027, which is when the state requires public water supplies to start replacing lead service lines. So kudos to the city. There's not many communities, very few communities that are in this position that were so proactive and getting on top of things and getting the service lines replaced as quickly as possible. Many, much, we've been getting a lot of feedback from residents, very positive feedback. No construction project is perfect, but we feel very good about how things have gone on. That's due to all of the legwork, all the hard work by the city staff of the coordination. It's hard to describe and quantify and verbalize just the level of effort that goes into each and every single one of these houses of the inventorying, figuring out what's there, how to replace it, how to notify them, getting filters to them after the fact. I mean, there's just a whole set of checklist that you have to go through in order to make sure each and every, and every single address is like its own project. So making sure that every single one of the addresses, every single project goes off without a hitch. It's been a phenomenal effort. We, EEI has been working in about almost 25 different communities on lead service line projects. I have not seen programs go nearly as smoothly as what has gone on here in Batavia. So hats off to staff and to all of you for supporting the efforts here. With that, I will take any questions.
Any questions?
I just found out my old house had all lead service lines.
Well, with the GIS database, you can, you can find, yes.
Thank you for replacing them. I appreciate it.
Yep, yep.
What was the total number of pipe replacement lines that we did at the end of the day here?
The total number of lead service lines to
Yeah, the service lines.
So there's going to be 1,200. We're near 700 replacements, and there's going to be about 1,200 total.
All done.
Yeah, 1,200. Yep.
And you've mentioned all the other cities you've worked with, other places you've worked with. We are probably going to be the first city in the state to be done with ours.
With the level, with the number of services that you have, yes. There are some other communities that only have a handful
Okay.
of services that have completed them, but those are few and far between. But yeah, given the circumstances, you're in fantastic shape. Yep.
Would not want to be in Chicago.
Yeah. Chicago is gonna take decades to replace them.
A little bit of history here. In 1891, Batavia tried to install a water system community in town, and the residents voted it down. And so on January 10th, 1893, they had a fire in the East Side School. The building burned down. All the kids were in it, and they got all the kids out. Nobody got hurt. But after they had the fire, within about three weeks, they had another referendum, and the referendum passed almost unanimously. So that was the catalyst to get the whole thing done. And so some of this, I talked earlier, water superintendents, and some of them were the opinion that some of this pipe in the ground that we had probably was put in 1895. And so we had one of the oldest water systems in the area in the ground here, and it certainly needed to be replaced. And I really commend the staff and yourself for putting all this together, because it really has come together in a very, very favorable light. You know, and another thing we had happen in the pre-World War II days, we had some subdivisions that wanted to be built in Batavia. One of them was called Colonial Village, which is a subdivision right behind the Lincoln Inn restaurant on South Batavia Avenue. And they didn't want to put a pipe in the ground down there. So they put in a well-inseptic. And then in about 1970, the city council finally said, this is not working. We need to replace all of these. And so they started putting in the new water system. And in the first two or three weeks that they were putting it in, they're on the north side of Brandywine Circle, and they had some guy on a tractor that was too aggressive. He went down and he grabbed the gas line going into the house. And within about 20 minutes, he blew the house off the foundation. And that was a real eye opener for Batavia. So then
Probably heard that one across town.
Yeah, you did. And so as a result of that, that was another catalyst event. So it seems like a major fire has always been a catalyst to getting all this stuff done.
Well, there's catalysts for everything, right? Talk about Flint, Michigan.
Yeah.
That was catalyst for the whole country. And it's really a benefit overall. It is very painful to be aggressively going after it and putting together these programs. But at the end of the day, it's going to be such a benefit across the country, in particular in Batavia, to, to get the lead services out. So that's, yeah, it's usually a catalyst. It's usually an unfortunate event that you learn from that serves to, to move things forward.
Really, I have a lot of pride in our water system and our public utility in that regard, although I do all of our utilities. But they really have had to deal with some history that was in the making. And we never learned the lesson until about 1971 that, hey, we gotta get rid of all this well-inseptic and everything else. So eventually, most of it's gone now. There may be a few snuck around that didn't get touched, but there aren't many left. And those that are, I'm sure will be in here someday one.
Exactly. It'll happen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
And we'll move on to item 11, which is Resolution 2025-95R, authorizing purchase of two new pickup trucks for the fire department. You want to come up and explain? At least they're not as hard to get ahold of as ambulances or fire trucks.
Yeah.
That's Steve's problem, fortunately, not mine. Simply, simply stated, this is a request to replace two vehicles that are aging in our fleet. They're part of the annual replacement program. All the material was sent to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions as we go.
I went through it and read pretty much every page in it, because that's what I do. I like these, go through these. And I'm glad that, you know, one, that there's a non-turbocharged V8 in the smaller truck, and then the diesel that we know how to take care of, because it's pretty much what's been in every ambulance that we've had the past few years. So other than that maintenance, it's just how long does the transmission last?
2.3 or 6.2, is it?
No, it's a, it's a 5-liter Coyote in the, in the F-150.
Perfect.
400 horse.
Right.
And then 1,000 foot pounds of torque in the, the F-350. Pulled 26,000 pounds.
We'll poke it, GM.
Heavy.
So the 350 is a giant vehicle. It's replacing a Ford Explorer. Can you explain what the increased capacity is for?
Yeah, it's actually replacing our utility pickup truck, which is a 250 out at station two. It's rotating down. The Ford, the Ford Explorer 2012 was the command vehicle, our battalion car. It developed engine problems with that particular engine model.
Quite for their junk.
Yeah, as Alan said. And it was recommended to have a engine replacement. Vehicles valued it, well, open market about 6,000, trading about 3,000. Replacement is somewhere between 7,000 and 8,000 for the engine. So we rotated it back. It took it offline. Actually, when I became chief and I used what was the chief's car as the battalion car for the last three years in order to buy, to buy time and longevity of that aspect. So it doesn't rotate exactly into that replacement. The 20-year-old pickup truck that's at that, which is a 250, is gonna rotate into ESDA, and we'll be getting rid of a 1998 Ford Expedition that was originally the battalion car three times before that one. So, yeah. So, and the reason it's going from 250 up to a 350, we went on a deployment last year all the way down to Florida. And in the process of towing down there, we found out it was too much for that. And we had another department, we swapped trailers with the other department for three quarters of the trail, because we couldn't tow ours for that length of time. So we upgraded in order to meet the weight requirements and the long distance of our trailers, should that occur again in the future.
That truck will pull any trailer you've got. The F-350 will.
And it's now a crew cab, which allows us to send more people within that vehicle rather than, we took a whole fire engine down there last time, too. So they're not so fuel efficient, neither of them.
Questions? Someone make a motion to recommend the council Resolution 2025-95R, authorizing purchase of two new pickup trucks for the fire department. I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Soffa, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. I can go on consent. And then item 12, which is Resolution 2025-96R, approving a retention incentive for Superior Health Linens.
Yes. So Superior Health Linens has been in Batavia since 1990. They are a extremely large industrial laundry situation. They launder health linens for hospitals and other medical facilities. They employ 149 people, and they're our largest water utility customer. They're nearing the end of a 10-year lease agreement and looking at options, whether they want to continue to be located here in Batavia, or if they want to explore other options. One of the things that came up during the meeting is that they stated that although they have no meter on the discharge from their facility, they feel that they only discharge about 70% of the water that comes into their facility. However, because they don't have a meter, they're being metered at 100% of their water usage in their sewage rate, which is probably the most expensive part of their utility bill. And so one of the things that we recommended to them for lowering their utility costs would be to install this meter so that they can be appropriately charged for the amount of discharged water from their facility. But they asked us if we would consider some other But they asked us if we would consider some other incentive in recognizing their long-term being here in Batavia. And so staff is recommending that once the meter gets put on to their facility, that we take the measurements over the course of three months, see what that percentage actually is, and then offer them a rebate for the next 48 months. That would be equivalent to what they would have paid in those past 48 months, recognizing that had they installed that meter, that would have been the amount that they would have been charged for their sewage charge. So that's what we're recommending. And there is precedence for this. I think about seven years ago, we offered an incentive to Cast Aluminum Solutions, who was looking for redundancy of the electric coming into their facility due to casting aluminum. If they are out of power for more than 25 minutes, they have to throw their whole mold away and they're very expensive molds. And so the city paid for half the cost of creating that redundancy at the facility. Yes.
I just blanked on what I was going to say. Go ahead, Tony.
I was just curious, the, where does the other 30% go? Question I had, but you know, measuring it with the meter makes sense. So I do support this, but.
A lot of it is because of the temperature of the water, evaporation. Because they actually have to cool because we have a requirement that has to be less than 150 degrees when it enters the sewer, right, Jeremy?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it mainly evaporation?
It is through the drying process.
And through the drying process.
I was just going to say, you know, I like this. I don't necessarily like how it came about, but I really like what you guys did with it and I like the incentives and I like, you know, that they were willing to work with us. Is this something that we might want to look at? And I know it's not for everybody, but for those, you know, probably, what do we have? A handful of really large users? Is it something we approach them with proactively as like, hey, you know, we're just looking on, out on behalf of you guys, you know, this, something that, so when their time comes up for lease, they're like, you know what, Batavia did that for me, you know, it's not.
Absolutely. And we should do that with all of our large employers, period. Whether or not they're the large utility customers as well, but.
I mean, I don't want it to negatively impact us terribly, but I also don't want them getting overcharged and us to be not competitive in a, in a market.
It also helps to stay close because you might never hear about the fact that they're thinking about leaving.
Right. Oh, no. Most of the time you don't.
Thank you.
On that note, speaking of the data center, would they, do you think they might come to us for that, especially if they use an evaporative cooling system, which similarly would not have that water go back into our system?
The meter is not a very expensive piece of equipment. I think if they could, as Alderman Farinback pointed out, you know, every amount that they can peel out of cost, overhead costs is, is money in their pocket. So I'm sure they would look at that.
Is the utility going to be able to provide that service while still remaining in the black?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, due to the volume of the water that they are going to be consuming, we would still realize the profit from, not the profit, the revenue from that.
And I've worked with, with these meters, they're, they're cheap. Usually, yeah, they're not a big cost. Um, you know, just to point it out, these two data centers we just talked about, this place are right next to each other. And so maybe we should look at the sewage capacity on that whole block.
Yes. I was also wondering if it could be a gray water situation, but the extent to which the water is gray coming from a laundry facility is too gray.
But just capacity and everything.
Two points. We already did, as Laura mentioned before, Trotter did look at the sewer capacity as well, when they were looking at different systems for cooling. We were looking at the need to potentially upgrade the downstream end of the list station right in front of the data center. And in discussions with Superior Health Linens, Jeremy had pointed out that they already had a meter installed before, but because of their process, and they explained how they wash and there's even bigger than what you see at the laundromat, just huge drum rollers, that some of their towels were coming out of the dryer and getting clogged in the meter. And then that whole system got abandoned. And so revisiting that, that made them reevaluate their own system internally. So they are looking at that as well.
Right. And then would someone care to make the motion? We recommend the council Resolution 25, 202596R, approving retention incentive for Superior Health Linens. Motion by Malay, second by Soffa. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. That could go on consent.
Yes.
Okay. Then we will go on to item 13, project status. You have four minutes.
No problem. On the 21st, the city council meeting will be, BEC is going to provide their quarterly update and it will be a continuation of our discussion of the vegetation on Clark Island. Very soon, within the next few weeks, the fabulous Fox River Project is going to be building a boat launch here in Batavia next to the new skate and pump track that the Park District recently installed. That comes from a grant that the county received and they are spending money in five communities along the Fox River, the city of Batavia being one of them. The lead service line replacement project is going to be moving to South River Street and North Washington Street this week. And so we're going to, is it this week, Jeremy, or next week? This week. And so you're going to see flaggers out there. That's, you know, one of those areas that's, makes it a little, little bit difficult. On July 17th at 2 o'clock PM, it's cones with a cop at the Batavia Creamery. That is always a very popular event. So I just want to let everybody know that that's happening. That's all I have.
I have, I have one more thing I want to add before we end the meeting. It's a nice thing. Yesterday I had a meeting here in the morning at nine o'clock and one of the people who came to this meeting was the mayor of Highland Park, Illinois, Nancy Rotary. Now, if you may remember who Nancy Rotary was, last year on the 4th of July, they were having a big parade in downtown Highland Park. And a guy got on the roof of a building and started shooting and he ended up, I believe 26 people. And he tried to shoot the mayor, but some policeman or something got her pulled away and she survived it. And so as she said to me yesterday, I've been in a year from hell to back. And she says, I came to this town yesterday to come to this meeting, it was the Metropolitan Mayor's Executive Board was meeting here. She says, I walked, drove into this town. I got off of 90 up in Elgin and came down Route 31. And when I got to Batavia, here was this big building with this beautiful tower. And then as I started driving down Batavia Avenue, here were all these nice architecturally significant homes. And she says, I came down the hill here and here was what was an old factory building that found out was the city hall. And then she joked about my name being on it. But then, then she says, what was this? So I told her it was a windmill factory and later a company called DK Aerospace. And they were involved in the space industry and all this good stuff. So then we went ahead and had the meeting. And when we got done with the meeting, she says, I'm just blown away by the things I see in this town. Would you take me on a little tour? So she says, there's this thing I hear called the River Walk. Could we go out and walk the River Walk? So several people went with us and we went out the door and we walked the River Walk and she was wooing and ahhing everything that she was seeing. And then she gets down here and she sees the flag monument. So I explained that to her. And then she says, could we get in the car and you give me a tour of some more of Batavia? So I put her in the car and we went down and she wanted to see, she says, I hear you got a new sewer plant in town. I said, it's under construction. So I took her down there and she says, I told her it's not done yet. If you want to come back and bring some aldermen with you, I'll be happy to show you. Well, I probably will do that. I can't believe there's a sewer plant that looks this nice in anybody's downtown. So then we get up in the car and I go up the hill and she says, there's a swimming pool someplace here, isn't there? So then I take her down to the quarry and she was totally blown away with that. She had never seen a nicer in-town swimming pool anyplace in her mind. So then we went out on Main Street and she was, I showed her Bellevue and a whole bit. And then we went out and rode around Randall Road for a few minutes. And I explained that was where all the money for the city was coming from. So she says, who really runs this place? I said, well, it's a strong city council, weak mayor, former government, which is the way, I said, I go to the meetings, I run them or the mayor pro temp runs the committee meetings and I don't vote in any meeting unless there's a tie. She says, well, that's kind of the way I am. But she says, I've never seen a city council that must be so involved in, you know, absorb and of what's going on in this town. She says, this, this group's got to be a model. So she said, would you have any problem if some night I bring a group of my aldermen down to your city council meeting? So I'm just mourning, you know, we may be getting Highland Park down here one of these days.
They could set it up and watch it at home. They can watch us from there.
But she was overwhelmed by everything that you gave me. Final thing she said. She says to me, where are you getting all these street names? And I said, well, that's off a historical list of people in town that have had a significance and made some major contribution. Their name goes on the list and then ordinance reads, you have to pick the street name off that list. And she said, what a great idea. I'm going to steal that one from you right, right now. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that I may be sending you a memo that we're getting the Highland Park City Council down here to watch one of your meetings to find out how the right way it is to do it. So thanks for being such a great group.
On that note, do we have any others? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?